Would everyone please rise for the presentation of the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Palm Springs Air Force ROTC Junior Color Guard?
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Let's give a hand. And a thank you to the Palm Springs Air Force ROTC Junior Color Guard. Please be seated. City Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Holstich?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Roberts?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kors?
Present.
Mayor Moon?
Here.
All of Councils present.
Okay, thank you. This evening, we do have one special presentation, and I'd like to have Mrs. Hyatt come up from St. Teresa to present for us the Students' Modernism Projects.
Good evening, Mayor Moon and Council members. We are so excited to be here this evening, and this is a wonderful honor. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Blaisdell for all of her help and support. We are also very pleased to have so many members from the Palm Springs Modernism Committee here with us this evening. And I'll introduce my students, and they'll talk about our program. This is 8th grader Audrey Pies, 6th grader Isabella Martinez, and 6th grader Sadie Pies. And I will turn it over to them. Thank you again.
Good evening, Council members and Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about our projects. And I'm on behalf of St. Teresa School. I'm Audrey Pies, and I'm a current 8th grader and Student Council President of St. Teresa School. I'd also like to give a big thank you to the Palm Springs Committee for introducing our school and funding some of our programs that we do at our school, which begins at 4th grade, when an architect comes to the 4th grade and introduces them to modernism through a style of art when painting tiles. And they interpret their style of modernism art through tiles, and that kind of introduces them into modernism. In 5th grade, the Palm Springs Modern Committee sponsors us to take a tour of Palm Springs to show us around Palm Springs and let us see the different iconic buildings of Palm Springs and the modernism that it has within the city. And my personal favorite is the Alexander Homes, because it was great to see them in great detail and have great people there to guide us on what they were and just tell us how great buildings are and how they contribute to the city. In 6th grade, as you can see here, they create models based on buildings in Palm Springs. I personally did St. Teresa Church by William F. Cody, and they have their buildings here, and they'll talk to you about them later. In 7th grade, we have a painting we have to do, and it's based on an international building, and I chose a Silvovski Museum in Russia. And we have to combine it with a world event, and this museum was based on the first man to orbit the Earth, and that's what I chose to be my event topic as well. And as you can see here, you can see you have to incorporate both your topic and your building, so you have your building here and your topic, which was the first man to orbit the Earth, within the background. In 8th grade, what I'm currently working on now is a presentation based on different interviews on people who have influenced the modernism culture. And mine, which is the California Preservation Foundation and others such as Albert Frey, Vassilis Palmas, artists such as Shag and Hugh Capter and Modernism Furniture. And we do these presentations based on these interviews, and my interviewee is right here if you'd like to. And we create those presentations, and if you're interested in any of these projects, they'll all be presented on Thursday, the 11th of April, if you'd like to see and have a look at 6:00 PM. And I'll hand it over to the 6th graders.
Hello, my name is Isabella Martinez, and I'm a 6th grade student at St. Teresa School. I chose Palm Springs City Hall as my modernism project. The architect was Albert Frey, and it was built in the year of 1952. I chose Palm Springs City Hall because I like the round sunscreens and opening over the entrance. The material is used and the 3D printer is a filament that melts then is deposited. Now it's time for some fun facts. One of the most influential elements was the creation of a screen wall at the front of the building. The Palm Springs City Hall is an icon of mid-century architecture. The aqua color on the main porch was chosen to deter birds from building a nest as it resembles the sky. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sadie Pies, and I'm a 6th grade student at St. Teresa School. The building I have chose is the Saguaro Palm Springs located on Sunrise Way and East Palm Canyon Drive. I chose this building because it has lots of colors, and I saw how much detail it had, and I wanted to include that in my project. It was finished on February 1, 1977, and its architects are Stamberg Affreit and Andrew Zobler. It has 245 rooms and 15 wildflower colors across the Coachella Valley. It was first the International, then it was the Holiday Inn, and now it's the Saguaro. The materials I used are poster board, foam board, cardstock, hot glue, ribbon, paint markers, puffy paint, transparency paper, and lots more, but these were the main. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hyatt and your students from St. Teresa School. Thank you very much. And I think we can all see this is just one more thing that Modernism Week and the Modernism Group does for Palm Springs. Their benefits go throughout every portion of our existence here. So the next item, it's all downhill from here. The next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council at this time will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items, and request consent calendar items be removed for discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items? Are there any items any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and/or votes? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remove 1F, 1L, and abstain on 1A, and I think it's more appropriate to do this later, but I'm going to make a recommendation that we continue item 5B when we get to it.
Continue which item? 5B? 5B, okay. Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was also going to note an abstention on item 1A. I'm recusing myself because my name is on the document. And that is it. The other items were pulled. Thank you.
1A, okay. Yes, she did. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended with the following items pulled from the consent calendar? Item 1F, 1L, and 5B, and Councilmember Middleton and Holstich are abstaining from item 1A. Motion to approve made by Councilmember Mayor Protim Kors, seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Next item is report of the closed session, city attorney?
Yes, good evening. Peter King, general counsel, acting city attorney. There were no actions or resolution to the two existing pieces of litigation. The three matters discussed that had potential or significant potential for litigation, there was no action taken on that. And the nine matters that were considered and discussed with the city, with me, there was no action taken on that either.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would also note from closed session, at the previous meeting, council had given me direction to negotiate a three-month employment agreement with Mr. Keen as general counsel, and I just would note for the record that that actual agreement will come to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Reddy. Thank you, Mr. King. Okay, next item is public testimony for non-public hearing agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council only on agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Testimony for public hearings will only be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comments on non-agenda items will be taken later in the meeting. Okay, we currently have 12 people in queue. The first one is Kathy Wermick, followed by Joy Silver, then Chuck Parker, Feliz Nunez, then Jessica Spry. Kathy Wermick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here for the Library Board of Trustees to support 1H, which is the design work on the Wellwood patio. The library board is fully in favor of it and wanted to thank Dr. Reddy, Marcus Fuller, and Flynn Fag for their work on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wermick. Next is Joy Silver, then Chuck Parker, then Feliz Nunez, then Jessica Spry, then Judy Norman.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for this opportunity. I am asking you to support the MOU resolution between Imperial County and Riverside County on the Salt and Sea MOU with the friendly amendment that will allow for water importation into the Salt and Sea as part of the solution. You may know that Assemblymember Garcia had put out an RFI for those solutions to be put forward. Three of them have been accepted by the state of California, and we are hoping and asking you to vote yes on the resolution with the friendly amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Next speaker is Chuck Parker, followed by Feliz Nunez, then Jessica Spry, Judy Norman, then Peter Mayetta.
I wanted to, one of my friends here, it's also a member of the Salt and Sea Coalition, will be explaining the GEI Water Import Proposal to you. I was going to take the other two, just to familiarize you briefly with these proposals. The second proposal is by the Binational Corporation. It's called the Salt and Trough Interconnection Project. It's to restore the historic inflow and outflow to and from the Salt and Trough, which is a geologic formation that extends from Palm Springs to the Sea of Cortez. At this time, the Salt and Sea has no outflow. They plan to import water through two 12-foot diameter pipes from the Salt and Sea, and then return saline water through a single 12-foot pipe back to the Sea of Cortez to mix with the Pacific Ocean. This proposal's estimated cost is $7 to $8 billion, funded by a private-public partnership, and it would take six to seven years to deliver water. The third proposal is by Cordoba Corporation. It's called the Salt and Sea Water Importation Project. They would bring in water by pipeline and create a perimeter lake, which is one of the proposals of the existing MOU. And this amendment would actually provide enough water to fill a perimeter lake, which would create bird and fish habitat. Then they would leave the central part of the lake very saline, so there would be no need to desalinate or move the salt that would be produced by desalination. This project would cost $1 to $3 billion. If you'd like to read more about these proposals, you can go to the state's website, naturalresources.ca.gov, and click on the Salt and Sea button. We really would appreciate it. This amendment is merely asking for these possibilities to be considered as part of the long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Next speaker is Feliz Nunez, then Jessica Spry, then Judy Norman, Peter Mayetta, then Robert Mueller, then Tom Coon.
Good evening. I basically want to also support the fact that we need water to be brought into the Coachella Valley, because, for example, there's a lake perimeter that was proposed by Manny Perez, and it's gone from 4,000 acres to be covered by this lake. Now it's less than 900 because there is no water. There's a problem, of course, the stench is going to start building up all around the Coachella Valley. Property values are going to go down, and the health of people is in danger already. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Nunez. The next speaker is Jessica Spry, then Judy Norman, Peter Mayetta, Robert Mueller, Tom Coon, then Alan Worthy.
Hi, good evening, council members.
I was just clearing the last person.
Okay, thanks. Hi, my name is Jessica Spry. I previously served as a Sustainability Commissioner here in Palm Springs, and I'm currently a member of the Salt and Sea Coalition, which is a subgroup of Courageous Resistance. As you may be aware, the environmental disaster of the Salt and Sea not only impacts the health and safety of local residents, but also threatens of local residents to the Salt and Sea, but also us, our health, and our local economy. As the sea recedes, toxic dust is exposed, windy conditions causes dust to become airborne, and they flow, they will flow into our community. So the MOU before you excludes consideration of one important long-term solution for the Salt and Sea, which is ocean water importation. Our coalition believes ocean water importation is an important solution and needs to be fully vetted. At the same time, the perimeter of North Lake solutions are considered. Please consider approving this amendment to the regional MOU. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Spry. The next speaker is Judy Norman, followed by Peter Mayetta, Robert Mueller, Tom Coon, Alan Worthy.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Judy Norman. I'm a member of the Salt and Sea Coalition and a teacher at John Glenn Middle School in Indio. I'd like to give you just a little bit of information about the other portion that Chuck Parker referred to as part of the ocean water import proposals. The request is for the RFI ocean water, I'm sorry, the request for information on the water import to the Salt and Sea was put out by Governor Brown at the urging of Assemblyman Eduardo Garcia, whose district encompasses the Salt and Sea. The State of the California Salt and Sea Management Plan has a mandate to develop a long-term plan for the restoration of the Salt and Sea by the end of the year. All of the projects in the current 10-year plan and in the MOU between Riverside and Imperial Counties only address short-term and medium-term solutions. It is in the spirit of complementing these plans that we're advocating for the inclusion of the ocean water import, and I believe that you already have copies of all of those. But just to give you a little bit about one of the plans, which is the GEI Binational Canal and Colorado River Augmentation. It's to bring water to the Salt and Sea by lined canal and pipeline to raise the level of the sea and lower the salinity, desalinity, 2 million acre feet of water per year, and mix this distilled water with the Colorado River water, then dispose of or sell the large volumes of salt that is a byproduct of desalination. The cost would be $3 to $5 billion, funded by the state of California for the water import and the federal government for the water desalination. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Norman. Next speaker is Peter Mayetta, then followed by Robert Mueller, Tom Coon, Alan Worthy, then Laura Natchison.
Good evening, Mayor Moon, city council, city staff. My name is Peter Mayetta, and I'm a candidate running for city council in District 2. Tonight, I'm here to address Agenda Item 1L, the request for city council consideration and approval of a resolution in support of the Imperial Riverside County Joint Memorandum of Understanding on the Salt and Sea. I'm in full agreement with having comprehensive analysis done included into the SSMP Long-Term Salt and Sea Plan. A shrinking Salt and Sea could expose its toxic-coated bottom to wind storms posing a major air pollution hazard and health risk for every resident in the Coachella Valley. As you're aware, the Salt and Sea mud contains enough arsenic and selenium to qualify for disposal in a dump reserved for the most toxic of society's trash. I fully support your rescinding and replacing Resolution Number 24521, adopted on December 5, 2018, with a restated and amended resolution to obtain a comprehensive analysis of ocean water being imported to the Salt and Sea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayetta. Next speaker is Robert Mueller, then Tom Coon, Alan Worthy, Laura Natchison, then Daryl Terrell.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity of speaking. My name is Robert Mueller. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage and a member of an organization called Courageous Resistance. I'm here to speak on behalf of the MOU with the addendum that I believe you're considering for the Salt and Sea. I just wanted to let you know that several of us have raised this issue also with the city of Rancho Mirage, and we'll be meeting again with their city council tomorrow. So I'm optimistic about the outcome there, and I hope we can be optimistic about the outcome here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Next speaker is Tom Coon, then Alan Worthy, Laura Natchison, then Daryl Terrell, then Elmer Diaz.
Mayor Moon, council members, thank you for the time, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'm speaking also on 1L, the Memorandum of Understanding for the Salt and Sea. I ask you to support the MOU and the amendment for bringing saltwater into the Salt and Sea. As a scientist, I'm concerned about the toxins that lie at the bottom of the sea. Should these residues become aerosolized, it will impact not just the residents, but all the flora and fauna located in the Coachella Valley. So I ask you to please support the amendment that will allow saltwater be brought into the sea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coon. Next speaker is Alan Worthy, then Laura Natchison, then Daryl Terrell, Elmer Diaz, and then Pat Cooper is our last speaker. Unless anyone else wishes to speak, please put a card in at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. So, of course, I support it. Vote yes. I hear our health and the economy, so what I don't hear, which of course is synonymous with the economy, is of course the big passion here, real estate, because it's a disclosure on the transfer disclosure statement, more commonly known as the TDS form. So, you know, please, we're all working together on homelessness and crime and everything else that is a disclosure. These are not good disclosures, okay? I would not want to be selling real estate here right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Next speaker is Laura Natchison, then Daryl Terrell, Elmer Diaz, and then Pat Cooper. Next is Daryl Terrell, then Elmer Diaz, and Pat Cooper. Anyone else wishes to speak? Please put in a card at this time.
Hi, my name is Daryl Terrell from Moreno Valley. In the mid-year budget update, a powerful fiscal storm continues to gain speed. That's why I'm asking you to consider priority-based budgeting. It's a new budget process that builds your budget in a way that delivers the results your residents wants at the price they're willing to pay. Instead of starting with the previous budget year, you decide how much money you want to spend next year, work with your residents to define what's important to them. Then you decide how much money each of these outcomes is worth. Then you divide the money among them and rethink the way your departments go about producing them. The Government Finance Officers Association has adopted this approach of budgeting as a recommended practice. It has already proven its value in more than a dozen states, cities, counties, and school districts. It's not a magic wand. However, I believe that adopting this new form of budgeting, in fact, will benefit you because it will create accountability for performance. It focuses on energy, on what to keep, not what to cut. It purchase results. Last year's costs are no longer the starting point of the budget process. It forces low-value spending out of the budget every year. It helps you find, fund new investments that promise important results rather than forcing them to compete for the scraps after existing programs are funded. In the city of Baltimore, this budget process cut a large structural budget deficit in half. It shrunk unfunded liabilities by 25 percent and pumped $130 million to new investment in infrastructure. And I'd like to enter this in the public record.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Our next speaker is Elmer Diaz, and our last speaker will be Pat Cooper, unless someone else puts a card in right now.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Elmer Diaz, and I am an organizer with the IBEW. We represent over 20,000 electrical workers all over SoCal. I specifically reside here in the Coachella Valley, and I'm in charge of organizing here. What I wanted to bring to your attention before you proceed any further on your CCAs and considering at what rate to lock in your residents is we currently are awaiting for a hearing from the contractor state licensing board, and I would like to share something with you real quick. Our industry has been in a long debate with the contractor state licensing board over the proper license needed to install battery and energy storage systems. Lack of clear regulations has allowed C-46 solar contractor licensees to install battery energy storage systems when paired with solar photic systems. This has occurred even though battery energy storage systems are separate electrical systems, and the C-46 solar contractors, and especially their workers, do not have the electrical training or expertise required to protect the workers, first responders, or the general public. Now, they will be having this hearing on the 18th, which will decide if the C-46 contractors will be able to install this work or not. Which brings me to my next point. Edison, as of next month, will be changing their hours for the net metering program that they offer from currently like noon to 4, now from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, which will greatly affect all your residents that currently are using that program. And if they think they're going to be getting money back when we enroll them in this, they probably aren't. So I'd like to ask you guys again to reconsider all the legislation coming up within the next month that will affect you guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diaz. Our last speaker will be Pat Cooper. Anyone else wishes to speak? They need to put a card in now.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Pat Cooper, and I'm here on behalf of Supervisor V. Manuel Perez. I'm here to speak about the Salt and Sea MOU. I wrote the MOU on behalf of Riverside County and Imperial County in the supervisor's office for both Supervisor Perez and Supervisor Ryan Kelly. At this time, we prefer not to have the Salt and Sea MOU amended. We prefer to keep the verbiage intact. All of this is written in the MOU. All of the cities in both Imperial and Riverside Counties have kept the original M O U verbiage except for Palm Desert, and we did not get the opportunity to respond to Palm Desert when they took their vote. Imperial County Supervisor Ryan Kelly approached Supervisor Perez about creating this M O U to show the state that the local jurisdictions had unity on common goals and agreed projects. Agreed projects. The Salton Sea Management Plan, which is the 10-year S S M P, is part of the agreed project. Riverside County's North Lake Plan, as well as a broad support for the Perimeter Lake Concept. The water import concept is still in early discussion. The state has not taken a formal position on a water import concept, but has taken steps to evaluate it and could potentially possibly continue to evaluate it. But they've not taken a position on it as of today. We, both counties, are focused on the state's 10-year S S M P because it's immediate. It's sooner than a water import concept. And Riverside County's North Lake Plan because, quite frankly, both counties were unhappy with the state's inability to take responsibility for the Salton Sea. The water importation concept steps into a federal jurisdiction. We at the county felt that we needed to take local action in response to the state's inaction.
Ms. Cooper, you'll have to wrap up here, please.
Okay. Also, since this is a project that's based in Mexico, we have not seen any Mexican elected official support for this project.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Cooper. Any other speakers? Mr. City Clerk.
No other speakers?
We have one coming up now. Are you putting in a card? Okay, all right. Seeing none, we will close this portion of the public.
Hi, I'm Laura Natchison, Senior Grant Writer for Desert AIDS Project, and I'm speaking to -- but I don't know if this is the correct order.
This is for Agenda Items only.
On non-agendized. Right, I know. Our matter is agendized for later.
No, no, no.
You want me to do it anyway?
What do you want to discuss?
I want to discuss new business in the C D B G process that you're going to be considering right now.
Okay, that's now, okay then.
Okay. Sorry, my apologies. All right. Thank you all for your hard work. On behalf of the residents of Palm Springs, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to this agenda item. For the past 34 years, Desert AIDS Project has been serving persons living with and affected by HIV and AIDS living in Palm Springs. D A P is also a federally qualified health center with the capacity to serve low-income community with primary health care regardless of their ability to pay. We're now serving over 6,000 regular clients who are low and very low-income people. Nearly 3,000 are living with HIV/AIDS. D A P is deeply grateful for C D B G funding awarded by the city for facilities improvements that benefit all of our patients and clients. As a result of C D B G funding, D A P can prioritize funding for direct client services for the low-income community. For example, with support from the city of Palm Springs, C D B G funding over five years, D A P installed new energy-efficient facilities, solar reflective roof, upgraded HVAC system, installed thermo-efficient windows and doors throughout our main facility, and we were able to direct those savings from reduced energy costs, $6,000 per month, to direct client services. And this was really exciting. The city of Palm Springs and D A P were jointly awarded a prestigious award, the Audrey Nelson Award, in 2017 from the National Community Development Association for these energy efficiency projects. For the past, let's say, three years, C D B G funds supported D A P's emergency preparedness generator, which was completed last year. So in the event of a power outage, in a catastrophe, a disaster, the emergency generator can come on, and D A P will be able to provide care and treatment to the community. We hope that the city will continue to make C D B G funds available to nonprofit organizations like D A P and others, so we may continue to optimize every dollar for direct client care. Thank you, and my apologies.
Thank you. That's pretty good. You made it right into the wire, and you finished right on time.
My dog thanks you. That was my dog.
Okay, thank you very much. No any more speakers, Mr. Mahia. Okay, seeing none, we will go to the next item, which is City Council Subcommittee on City Managers' Comments and Reports. This time is set aside for the City Council to provide additional general comments, reports, and announcements. Additionally, this time is set aside for the City Manager to update the City Council on important items initiated by staff or previously requested by the City Council. Dr. Ready, you want to kick this off?
Thank you, Mayor. We'd just like to note a couple of things. One, just like we have a slide, we have new chairs came in at our airport, and if we have a slide, I think, on our airport chairs? Can I see that, please? So these are the new Modernism Herman chairs, and a couple more slides. And I would note, Councilmember Roberts is the liaison to the airport, and you wanted to mention anything about the chairs?
Do we not happen to have a picture of the old ones, do we?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I should have brought one. So, in fact, I did an interview with the press on this today and about the general upcoming renovation of the airport. But why these are important is, you know, the people's first experience, or many people's first experience of Palm Springs is coming through our iconic airport that was, of course, designed by Donald Wexler in the early '60s. And it's a powerful thing to come through that airport. And why these chairs are important is that they are of the era. These are designed by Charles and Ray Eames, who are important modernists through the '40s, '50s, '60s, and these are classic airport seating. And we spent a lot of money to have these. We've replaced almost, I think we'll be replacing, what is it, Dr.? Almost 800 seats when we're all done? But these have, and the next time you're in the airport, take note of them. In fact, sit down, they're very comfortable, but it is the beginning of our sensitive remodel of the airport. And the various boards and commissions, and myself and our staff, have watched this process very carefully so that as we expand for our increasing tourism and all the people who want to come see us, and the airport is just packed these days, we will be able to expand without compromising the quality and character and that very important thing that Palm Springs offers, which is that magical portal to the past. So, anyway, it was funny that I got excited about it. I was picking somebody up at the airport yesterday, and the press even picked it up. So if you're asked about these, you now know.
Thank you, Councilmember Roberts.
And the other thing I just mentioned.
Pretty.
Mayor and Council, I would just note, one other thing is you had asked us to put together council candidate forums, and so I'm going to turn it over to the City Clerk, Mr. Mahia, and he's going to give you an update on our progress.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have two city council candidate forums scheduled in which will be reviewing the nomination process and rules and regulations related to campaigning. The first one will be held on April 15 at 6:00 to 8:00 at Demuth Community Center, and the second will be held on April 23 from 6:00 to 8:00 at the James L. Jesse Unity Center. This information will be shared via press release, social media announcements, advertisements in the desert sun, postings in local businesses, and at the city's community centers, library, leisure center, and on the city's website. And if I could note, the city's website, www.palmspringsca.gov/elections. That already has information posted for anybody who's interested in running for City Council, and we're seeking candidates for Districts 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you, Mr. Mahia. Anything else? Dr. Ready? Dr. Ready, I have two quick questions for you. One is, still hear from people that the heaters on the swimming pool are still not fully functional. Do you have an update on that status?
Yes, Mayor. The one heater's working, one is not. When the weather was colder, the last cold snap we had, it was harder to get the pool to a temperature that was satisfactory. Now that it's a little warmer, we're doing better. But the new heater has been scheduled to be replaced. However, because of a couple swim meets, that has been pushed back a week or so, a couple weeks, and so the two-week closure of the pool is going to become in early to mid-April. We'll put out a press release to let everyone know, and it'll take us two weeks to replace the heater.
Okay, thank you. And also, you were going to give us an update on the new security cameras going into the uptown and downtown in Palm Springs?
Yes, as you know, the original cameras in the downtown were very old, and most of them were inoperable. The chief has been proceeding, along with our Information Technology Department, to replacing the downtown cameras, and then we're going to be adding cameras in the uptown. And when that project's fully complete, we'll get Council a full report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ready. I wanted to start off, and I'm sure Councilmember Mayor Portem will complete it, but Mayor Portem and I have been working hard for a long time on the convention center and the renewal of the contract, and we extended it for, we extended it several months to allow us to get more time to see if other people wanted to compete, which we did end up with one of the company that competed. And we went through a very long process on this. In fact, last October 30, we have an advisory board advising us on this, and they did interviews of the two companies, A E G and S M G, and they did three hours of interviews for each one of the companies. And I gave the councilmembers links to those interviews so you could watch them. Total six hours of very detailed interviews.
Oh, I can watch.
Yeah, uh-huh. And then on November 20, the advisory group met with Mayor Portem and I and gave us some advice on that. Then on the 3rd of January, on January 29, excuse me, on January 29, we met with Dr. Ready and Mr. Fuller, and also the advisory committee, and also with the people from A E G and S M G, and had very long discussions, which lasted almost all day. And so we've been going through this with a lot of detail, but then suddenly, out of nowhere, we found out that A E G was buying S M G. So this really made things more complicated. So that's why we haven't come back to the Council with a recommendation on this, because things keep changing. But Mayor Portem and I did want to bring up that we need to, our current contract with S M G expires on March 31st. So we can't leave that very important function sort of dangling and not knowing what's going to happen. So Jeff, you want to add on to that?
I mean, just, we should bring that back, just to make it clear that we're continuing, I guess, month to month, as we continue to have meetings and try and negotiate a contract to bring to Council.
Because this, actually, the acquisition of A E G, of, by A E G of S M G could take months and months, could take a year perhaps, because it's got to go through government approval, et cetera. So we need to have something in place. So if our next meeting, this is fairly urgent, we need to have an item come before the Council that we can have a contract in place until that merger is complete and we know what to do next.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the current amendment for S M G included a holdover of a month-to-month. So it's actually, we're actually okay with the current amended contract.
Okay. But that lets everybody know where we are right now. So we have to wait and see where this merger thing goes. Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. So I missed the last council meeting, and stop me if I mentioned what I'm about to tell you. This is a report from the C V A G Public Safety Committee, and I don't remember whether I told you this or not, but the district attorney for Riverside, Hestren, had created a cannabis regulation task force. And this force is made up of a number of agencies, and cities like ours can get involved with this task force as well. And I found this interesting, not only because I'm on the Public Safety Committee, but then what I'm about to tell you relates to cannabis, and I'm part of the Subcommittee on Cannabis, so I found this very interesting, and I thought you would. So the gentleman that came to speak on behalf of the task force gave us a lot of interesting facts. He's also willing to come here and tell us more, and I highly encourage Dr. Ready to invite him. I think it would be most helpful for the community to hear some of these statistics. I'm going to give a few. But what they have found is since the passage of Prop 64, or I'm sorry, Prop 64, making adult use of marijuana legal, what we know to be true today is that at least 50% of those using cannabis are still purchasing it from the street, meaning that even though they are allowed to purchase it now from authorized and legal vendors, they don't. And the reason they don't is because of cost. And they can still buy cannabis on the street for a whole lot less money. So what is the problem with that? Toxicity. So the cannabis that people are buying on the street that is being collected and tested is extremely toxic. It's coming from Israel, it's coming from Mexico, and it's coming from another country that I didn't write down, but it's extremely toxic, and it's particularly toxic for kids. So it's something we need to consider. The cannabis task force obviously is looking at ways of reducing tax and doing things that make purchasing cannabis legal more appealing. And of course, we're testing, and the state's testing, for toxicity, and that's a good thing. The thing that occurred to me in all of this was that we need to do a P R campaign about this. We need to let particularly our school-aged children know that if they're going to do this, if they're going to try to get a hold of cannabis, they need to know the toxicity that they're getting themselves into. In fact, the toxicity levels in some cannabis are now worse than what we're seeing in cigarettes, and they're completely unregulated, obviously, it's completely unregulated and untested. So I want to invite this guy back to tell us more. The last statistic that I thought was interesting, or just fact, is that obviously, prior to legalization, there were many cartels, drug cartels, that dealt in cannabis. And so I guess I imagined, and many others might have imagined, that with the legalization, the cartels would go away. In fact, they didn't. The cartels are stronger than ever because legalizing cannabis drew more people into wanting to try and use cannabis. So the cartels simply undercut the price, so they're doing better than ever. So the sad part of this is the problems that we had with cannabis prior to its legalization are worse than ever, and it's something we need to address as strongly as we address all the regulation that we're trying to address on cannabis all over. So I'm hoping that we can get this gentleman to come and give you more facts. The other thing I wanted to tell you is that, and Dr. Ready, I will get you that name, or we can get it from C V A G. I also wanted to give you just a very brief update on the Cornelia White House. One of the councilmembers had asked, of course, the Cornelia White House is in restoration right now downtown. It's been covered in fencing and other things. There's a delay in what's going on there because they found, of course, as it is so often true with restorations, that when they opened the floor, the rot of the foundation and the floors was much greater than they anticipated. So the work's going to take longer, but ultimately, that's a good thing. We're finding it, and when we do finally restore this, Palm Springs Treasure will restore it so that we hopefully won't have to think about it for another 50 years. Mr. Fuller, did you want to add to that report?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it, but there's a lot of work that's occurring inside the building, and so they've completely gutted the floor and some of the rooms and are reconstructing that whole subfloor. So as you mentioned, it's just taking a little bit longer, given the extensive work that's required.
If it's possible to send those two or three images that you showed me to the screen, that would be great. If not, don't worry about it, but it'll give the Council a better idea of what they're dealing with down there on the site.
Okay.
Sure?
Do we have an estimate about how long it might be? Just so I know it's impacting downtown businesses, and it's sort of an eyesore as it is now that we have a beautiful fence. We have the best construction fence out there. It looks good, but do we have an estimate about how long it'll be before it's up and running?
I don't tonight, so maybe on our next meeting, what I can do is provide those photos or some more photos, and then the estimate of where we're at.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, some detailed photos, some extensive photos, I think would be interesting for all of us and the public also, because everybody's watching that very closely. Mayor Portem, of course.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Two things. The first is, so it was brought to my attention that the convention center has entered into a contract for a convention with a group, a nonprofit known as Worldwide Marriage Encounter from July 11 to July 14, and it's understood to be one of their weekend experiences for married couples. So the organization bills itself as the largest pro-marriage organization in the world and promotes weekend experience for couples who want to make their good marriage even better. And it's open to the public. You can register, pay a fee, and come to this convention. The issue comes to that the organization only opens this to members in marriages between a man and a woman. So as a public entity, we don't discriminate against people based on their political beliefs. If this is an anti-equality organization or pro-equality organization, they can rent our space. We don't care what their beliefs are. However, what However, what organizations are not allowed to do under state law and local law is to discriminate in which members of the public can enter a facility, attend an event by a nonprofit or a business. And so the State Under Act prohibits that, and our nondiscrimination laws prohibit it. And while our Convention Center does not have our nondiscrimination language in their contracts, they do have in there that all the contracting entities have to comply with federal, state, and local laws. So I've been, I've talked to the city manager and our acting city attorney and outside counsel. And so what we're going to do, just so, because people have asked me about this, is we're having outside counsel reach out to the organization to get some specific information and to share what our laws are, and make them know that they need to comply with them in order to have the convention per their contract. And we've also discussed updating the Convention Center contract to incorporate our nondiscrimination language. So entities who reach out to the Convention Center to do a contract know what the rules and requirements under state and local law are. So just want to update people on that. The other issue I just want to bring on, and I'm just doing a little, and then Council Member Holstig was going to do the rest of this, but we had our homeless task force meeting on Thursday, and one of the things, working with staff, is we compiled a lot of the data from what we've done over the last three years. And I think one of the things that was most important and the biggest takeaway is was that 188 people, Palm Springs residents, who were on the street over the last three years, were moved into permanent housing. And that's a real change from the programs we were doing before, which is emergency shelter, where very few moved out of an emergency shelter into permanent housing, but moving to the Housing First program that we helped fund, and the two housing crisis teams that we've brought on, that the city fully pays for, have really helped us do this. So we're really happy with those results. We have more to do, but it shows things are moving in the right direction as far as getting people into housing and off the streets. We also learned in, as part of this process, that HUD, which is the federal government agency that does housing vouchers that we work to get through these various programs, has actually reduced the amount of the vouchers for Palm Springs even as rents go up. So the federal government has reduced that amount. And right now, there are 20, either individuals or families, who have vouchers that have been approved, that can't get an apartment, and it's for two reasons. One, it's not enough to cover rent, they're about 350 a month short to cover rent on a one-bedroom. And two, we need more landlords who are willing to rent to people who have been on the street. Landlords who are doing it, we've gotten great feedback, they get the housing vouchers upfront, they don't have to worry about not getting paid rent. People going through our Housing First program have a case manager, so if anyone is a landlord or knows one, please let us know so we can help make that connection. But Councilmember Holstig and I, from that meeting, would like to bring forward to council, it's about $4,000 a year for these 20 people to make that delta, to get 20 people who have vouchers before they run out into housing for the year, which would be $80,000 appropriation. So we'd like to bring that to the council at the next meeting, for council to discuss and decide if we want to do that. It would be limited to the delta, working with our housing programs to get people into housing. And it would, $4,000 would cover a year, so we'd just be covering that year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton?
If she can finish up on the homeless report. And I'll go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Just picking up on that, we had a important community meeting, and we talked to the press about this, you might have seen some of the news. But just to go over sort of some of the projects that we funded, the city of Palm Springs on homelessness and the results on that. But first, on the housing vouchers, the city of Riverside has done a similar program. And in being involved in the regional work with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, what we've learned is that a lot of government funding for vouchers is really restricted. But what cities can do, and you can hear that it doesn't pay enough to actually rent an apartment, so what we can do is sort of, we can have unrestricted funds for vouchers to cover the difference. And so a lot of cities have had successful results. So Riverside is a really good example. So we can reach out to Riverside as well and hear about their, their programs. So just in summary, really quickly about the report or the update about all of the services for homelessness that we provided since Roy's closed in mid-2016. So the city of Palm Springs, in partnership with the Desert Healthcare District, funded our own Palm Springs crisis response teams that go out with the police department to refer people to services. And so we have their numbers here, but they've made thousands and thousands and thousands of contacts. They basically have made about 10,000 contacts with people in 2016, 2017. Those are duplicated, that means they're going and many times, talking 50 times to one person. It takes a lot of contacts to get people to accept help and services. So that's been a really effective program. We also then doubled those crisis teams. So with Desert Healthcare District, who helped provide a matching grant, we funded a second team that works on the nights and weekends when people need help as well, right? Not just, not just homeless nine to five. So we're providing those services through the county behavioral health. We funded the Well in the Desert at $75,000 for their cooling center and their main place of business in downtown Palm Springs. We funded a new program with Martha's Kitchen and Village to provide wraparound service and employment services to people at the well and people going in for those services. I know Martha's told me that they were really surprised by the number of people that they were seeing coming in to that center and to Martha's. So they reported to us that year-to-date, from just July 2018 to December 2018, they served about 330 people in just half a year. So those are maybe some duplicates as well, but really a lot of services that, that that's We also have recently obtained HEAP funding, so that's the, last time you asked me on the HEAP, the Housing Emergency Assistance Program. I did it. And so we just actually got $550,000 from new state money to fund housing, bridge housing in the city of Palm Springs as a pilot program just for Palm Springs residents who are homeless, which is really incredible. Only four facilities, four programs were funded in our entire supervisors' district, District Four in Riverside County. So I'm really proud. We did that in partnership with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments and the Desert Healthcare District and the county and a lot of our community partners. But I'm so proud to represent Palm Springs, we're one of the only cities that our residents actually want these services in our city. The other cities are fighting over not having them often in their city, and so I'm proud to represent our city and our residents who are constantly asking us to do more on this. So yeah, the main takeaway for the numbers is the 188 people who received permanent housing. We did an analysis of the data for the path of life, the Housing First model that we're doing, and 80% of those people retained their housing, so they stayed permanently housed. The numbers for Roy's Shelter, when that was open, was about 3% stayed in permanent housing after exiting Roy's. So it's night and day, really, the effectiveness of those programs, and that's, that's the main takeaway. And then we just got this email from Jewish Family Services of the Desert, talking about our CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funding, that they've used to serve 700 people in the last year, 138 residents. So as I got that, this, I realized that the number and the update that we got on how many people were actually serving with services and with funding from the city doesn't even include all of that prevention. So that would be important to look at too, as we talk about that. So that's, that's my update on homelessness. And I think I'll, I'll leave it at that. I did a number of other meetings, I attended the Main Street Meeting for merchants downtown, we talked about a number of issues that are coming forward. I attended the encampment protocol working group meeting, that's with the county and a lot of public safety agencies, to plan for the flooding that we just had and how that impacts public safety. So to talk about how the city can be involved in the county's work and a lot of the public service agencies altogether. And then just one announcement, Mayor Protam Kors and I serve on the Business Retention Economic Development Subcommittee. We have our next meeting March 12th at 5:00 PM in the large conference room at City Hall. That's open to everyone, it's open to the public, and that's our opportunity to support local businesses and hear what programs you need, what is going on, and how we can support your work. So please attend that meeting and, and let us know what you need from us. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Middleton.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will be brief and fairly quick. Sunline Board of Directors met last week, we received a report on system performance, and on-time performance again was at 88% system-wide. That's up, consistent with what on-time performance was last year, three points better than it was in the previous year. Total ridership for public transit nationally is down a significant amount. In the Sunline ridership, it is down by just a couple of thousand riders, it actually equates to less than one-half of 1% reduction. So we're really pleased that riding is, people are using our public transit. At that meeting, we took a vote to ban smoking at all Sunline bus stops, and I would like to do a shout-out to a very dear lady who is a disabled Air Force veteran, who is a regular attendee at Sunline Board Meetings. And it was because of her experiences and her testimony during public comments, that the board became aware of this issue and was able to resolve it quickly, once it came to our attention. So public comments do matter. And the last thing, we changed committee assignments at Sunline, and over the next year, I will be chairing the Strategic Planning and Operations Committee and be the vice-chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. Lastly, I want to do a shout-out for Mrs. Hyatt and St. Teresa's. And as I was looking at those models, I was reminded of my days on the Planning Commission, where we would, for large projects, quite often ask the developer, can we get a scale model? And the developer would always tell us, no, it's way too expensive to do a scale model. So, Mr. Director, the next time a developer tells you that, will you please direct them to Mrs. Hyatt and her sixth graders at St. Teresa's? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I can give you the number of grit construction. One other thing I wanted to mention is Councilmember Holstig and I are on the, on the committee for, ad hoc committee for sponsorships and grants. And just this week, the city clerks and I had an announcement on this, and we are now accepting those applications for sponsorships and grants. And people need to move fairly quickly on this, because this is a process that goes fairly quickly. What will happen is these, these applications come in, and Councilmember Holstig and I will look at them and make recommendations to the full council. The full council will then decide on where to disperse the limited funds. And in fact, we don't even know how many funds will be available yet, because the council, when it does the budget, will have to decide at that time what the funds are. But, but the council will have prioritized these. And just to remind people, there's several rules on these. They, only 501(c)(3) charitable organizations are eligible to apply, applicants may seek funding for a specific program or project, or may request general operating funds for their organization. The council will consider requests for event sponsorship, however, be advised that funding for this purpose is very limited. The council will not consider requests for funds that will be re-granted by the organization in any way, and only typewritten applications will be accepted, and I think that means also printed out on a computer printer. To be considered for funding, the application must be submitted on time, complete, and all requested documentation, documentation must be attached. And these are due in on the 3 o'clock on Monday, April the 8th. That's not a lot of time, but we have simplified this process over the years. Councilmember Kors and I, in a fit of enthusiasm, made a very complex process three years ago that fortunately, we fixed next year. So it's much simpler now, but city clerk, could you add a little bit more information on people can get information on this and how to apply?
If they go to the city clerk's webpage, we'll have the application posted there. And they can submit those applications into the city clerk's office when they're, when they're completed.
Thank you. And please, if anyone is a member of an organization and wants to apply, do it on time, because every year, there are organizations that come in and they said they were late, they didn't know about it, and there's nothing we can do. There's a dead, there is a drop-dead deadline on this. And also, please make sure they're complete, because it's really sad with this organization, we really want to, we'd really like to help, and they've had an incomplete application, and that just ties our hands, we can't do anything. So please, as the city clerk said, go to their, his website and his webpage, and you can get information on this. Okay, anything, okay, Mayor Protam?
Sure, just a question, because we can't probably discuss that grant issue, but are the organizations that were funded before being asked to send in a grant report about how they use the funds?
So we'll be sending out a distribution to all of the previous awardees, as well as anybody who wasn't awarded but applied in the past three or four years.
Right. Now, I guess my question is, are we asking them to send in a report for the ones who got grants and what they did with them, because, and will get those as part of their new applications?
Correct. The application requires that they submit a follow-up report.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, next item is consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept a consent calendar without items 1F and 1L, and Councilmember Middleton and Holstig are abstaining on item 1A. Motion to approve made by Councilmember Roberts. Second item by Councilmember Middleton, motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Thank you. First item that's been pulled was item 1F, Human Rights Commission 2017-18 Report. That was, who, I'm sorry, who pulled that? I didn't write that on my notes. Councilmember Middleton, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
That's okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and this will also be brief. I want to congratulate the Human Rights Commission for their report and for all of the information. One of the things that they identify as a priority initiative for them is mediation services. I did not see any discussion in their report of success or activity in mediation services. I know through my work with Neighborhoods USA, that there are a number of cities across the country that have developed extremely successful mediation programs, and I would simply like to ask the Human Rights Commission to provide us with some information regarding the success of their mediation efforts, any barriers that they have, and any assistance that we can be to help improve the mediation operations that they have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holstig?
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. As the liaison for the Human Rights Commission, I'm happy to work with them on that. My understanding is that when we had a former commissioner, Suzanne Severin, she was providing a lot of mediation services, because she is a trained mediator. And so it looks like, based on this report, that they want to continue that and get that going again, but I'm not aware if it's currently services that are available. So it looks to me like we really would have to build up those services with the commission or with the supportive city staff. I know that there's some budget requests in here that are higher than their, typically, they get $2,000 as a budget for a commission. So I think we would just want to talk to them about that. It's an important service, a lot of cities do, looks like Mr. Dale Cook might have more information than I do as the liaison, but it's, it is an important service that a lot of cities provide for tenants, for example, or people in different neighbor disputes, a lot of different disputes, so it is an important role for the city. Did you have anything to add?
Help, sorry, set your microphone off.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember, we do receive inquiries, but most of it is commercial-based disputes, and based upon that, it takes participation of both parties. And many times, it's a commerce issue, and we don't have purview over those type of issues, but we have directed some of those to the city attorney's office and gotten consultation. So as to the barrier, it's beyond the jurisdiction of the Human Rights Commission, and we do refer to the state organizations, or even, as you referenced, landlord-tenant mediation, the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County. The Fair Housing Council of Riverside County assists with that.
I think there are some examples out there of cities who have made this work. I would draw attention to the city of Henderson, Nevada, which, a big part of making mediation work within a municipality is clearly, both parties have to agree. Where they have been successful is in publicizing that they have the mediation available, publicizing successes, and dealing with it on a voluntary basis to resolve amicably disputes, quite often that are very personal in nature. The barking dog, the car that's constantly parked in front of my house, but it's not my car, any number of neighbor-to-neighbor dispute processes. And you're right, it always comes back to two people agreeing. But when you get beyond the legalistic part of it, it becomes very difficult to say, "No, I won't come in and at least talk to a neutral party about what my dispute is." But if we're not going to go that route, if we're not going to take and try to follow up on doing mediation, then I think we need to drop from HRC that we have prioritized mediation if we don't think we can do it.
And the point is well-taken. There is a need for additional volunteers, so we need to ramp up in that area and have the proper training for those volunteers.
I would just ask, because I'm not aware of Henderson, Nevada's example, but it would be helpful if we even connected with them, because I would expect, is it an all-volunteer situation with a commission, or is it staffed up and has city staff support?
My memory is it's a mix.
Yeah. So that would be good to explore, and I'd be happy to carry that forward with the commission.
I'm happy to help.
Thank you. I just had a few other comments, if I may, on this, on this report. Thank you to the commission for writing a really detailed report. We don't always get a report like this from our commissions. And I thought it was important to attach to the agenda so that we could recognize them and the work that they've done in the last year. I just wanted to point out some important points in their report. So, one, they, this commission actually explored something that the council has been talking about, which is changing meeting times, so that it's more accessible to people who work or parents or people who might not typically go to those meetings. And they said that they tried it a few months in a row and then didn't quite, they tried it at different times and didn't quite see a difference, from first at 5:00 p.m., from 3:00 p.m., and then 5:30. And I just wanted to comment that really, we need to be doing this more, you know, for longer periods of time. I really applaud them for taking this on. It's the first commission that has done that. But it just, we see change over time. It takes a long time for people to realize that the commission times have changed and that they can attend at a certain time. So I applaud them, and I'd like to see that continue. I just wanted to thank our student representatives as well. So this is the only commission that has students from Palm Springs High School and a middle school representing the city on the commission, and I know that's been really effective. I just wanted to flag for city staff that there is a budget request in this. And so you can see sort of their budget and what they've included, and I can work with the commission on that going forward. I know they're working on fundraising and other needs. So that would just be a good discussion item to include when we do the budget. And then I just had a question really about this. So my sense, being the liaison to this commission for human rights, is that they should also take up the California Voting Rights recommendations from the working group and have some points and take a, you know, position on some of those recommendations, because I think actually that all of that work falls into this commission. So I don't know if the council, you know, would send it there to the commission so they can take a position, or it sounds like they asked for that and we're told that it sort of wasn't right for them yet. So I don't know if your CVRA group has a position on that, or... Yeah.
Well, listen.
Okay. So maybe we can work with staff about making that happen, because I think some of them, you know, they've been, this is in the purview of their commission, this is what they do. It would be nice for them to have input in this process. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve is made by Councilmember Mayor Protam-Corres. Second item by Councilmember Roberts. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next item is pulled from the consent calendar, item 1L, Request for City Council, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution in Support of the Imperial and Riverside County Joint Memorandum of Understanding on the Salton Sea. Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I asked that this be pulled because I knew it was going to be an issue for which there was going to be a tremendous amount of public comment. We did receive many very positive comments on the amendment. The very last comment, though, did come from Pat Cooper, who was the author of the MOU, speaking on behalf of Supervisor Perez, who I know has put in absolutely endless hours in negotiation on this and recommended that we move forward without making an amendment to the original MOU. I know I am very supportive of trying to bring ocean water importation as a part of the long-term solution, but I would like to have further opportunity to meet with Supervisor Perez and his office to fully understand what the impact of this change might be for the larger MOU that has done such, promises to do such incredible work. We have finally made a forward movement, thanks to the supervisor and thanks to the county finding a way to cooperate with Imperial County and with the state. So I'd like to suggest that we continue this until the next meeting and have an opportunity to meet with Supervisor's office.
Mayor Protam-Corres?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And I brought this forward at the request of some of our residents and people who are working on the issue. And I thought there are some really strong arguments made today. I am fine continuing it, to have that conversation with the supervisor before we vote for two weeks. So I think that makes sense, just to make sure we're in touch with him before we take action and see what, you know, if he wants any concerns or changes. Do it.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment on this. I think it's really important that we support this. And one thing, you know, I think the idea of pumping seawater to there is, seems to me like an amazingly good idea. And people say it can't be done, but yet I know we are all, we pump oil from Canada all the way to the Gulf of Mexico, and we pump oil all the way from Texas to the East Coast. That's oil, and we can't pump saltwater, you know, a few hundred miles from the coast. It just makes no sense. So there's got to be some political reasons or something behind it that doesn't allow that to happen. It makes, makes so much sense, we should really dig into that.
Yeah.
And I think everyone believes this can happen and should happen. It's just a question of how do we make it happen and what's the right timing of that.
Of course, pumping oil means dollars, so that's always, that's always the bottom line.
Yeah. So, but let's continue it to the next meeting, so we're not putting this off, so we can have those conversations and just report back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue?
Yep.
Motion to continue made by Councilmember Milton, seconded by Councilmember Roberts. Motion is on the floor. To the next meeting, to a date certain.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. Maeda. Next item is Public Hearings. Okay. Request for Approval of an Annual Update to the Palm Springs Zoning Code, Case 5.1466ZTA. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item you have before you is an implementation of an annual process to update, or perhaps better said, to clean up our zoning code. The corrections that are included in the ordinance before you this evening are corrections that have either been identified by staff in working with the zoning code, or some of our applicants have pointed out some errors and things that are wrong with our zoning code. And so it's our intent that once each year, we'll come before you with a cleanup ordinance for the zoning code. There are no major policy changes that are proposed as part of this item this evening. You'll see that there are some corrections or elimination of definitions that are no longer needed. There's corrections to terminology, such as the name of the department is different in various sections of the ordinance. There's some minor corrections to the use table. There's the addition of a parking requirement for a category of use where the parking requirement is not identified. And then we've also proposed to remove a couple of conflicts in regulations that, again, have been pointed out either by staff or by applicants. The Planning Commission reviewed all of these changes at their meeting on February 3rd and recommended approval without any revisions. We would also request your approval of this cleanup ordinance this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the proposed corrections.
Okay. Questions of staff before we open this to public hearings? Councilmember Roberts?
So Flynn, this looks good. I actually would have expected more. It gives me some hope about our zoning, that you're kind of getting ahead of it, right? So, just two quick questions. On page five of the red line, you define a home improvement center. And in the verbiage that got left behind is a home improvement center does not include industrial applications such as contractor's supply, wholesaling, bulk material supplies, or industrial-type uses, such as milling, planing, and major cutting of lumber or cutting or threading of pipes. But many home improvement centers now do some of those services, so I'm a little worried that you're defining that as not a home improvement center.
No, they can continue to do those services. It's just indicated that on an industrial scale, that those uses would not be permitted as part of a home improvement center. But doing simple things such as cutting your lumber for you, they would be permitted to do that under this definition.
Because I'm sure you know as well as I do, home improvement centers are becoming major supply for industrial-sized jobs, because they're the only ones who can compete on the material costs. So I think that that gets a little fuzzy, that definition. But I think that's fine in what you're doing. And then another question I had would be on page nine of the red line as well. And it's the title line, second from the bottom, and it says, "You simply define, you define special standards for specified medical and adult use." Why are we even separating it anymore? Or why, why aren't we just saying, "Standards for cannabis facilities"?
What we may do in the next update...
I mean, obviously, it's for, we don't say adult cigarettes or adult liquor.
No.
We just say liquor or cigarettes.
Correct. In our previous update to cannabis uses, prior, it was just medical cannabis facilities, but then we amended it to include adult use. And so throughout Chapter 93 of the zoning code, where it addresses cannabis uses, it says medical and adult use. We just want the title of that section to be consistent with the other terminology. However, if the subcommittee in the future decides to shorten that title, we will do so here as well.
So this is a streamline? Doing this saves you having to correct 30 other pages?
Exactly.
Gotcha. Makes perfect sense. Thank you. That ends my questions.
Councilmember Holstig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question for you. On page seven, third row is definitions of mobile home park. And it says, "Mobile home park means an area or tract of land where one or more mobile home lots are sold, rented, or leased to accommodate mobile homes and any associated accessory structures or uses." So I was just wondering if we looked at state law and how like the state mobile home residency law defines mobile home parks and what we relied on to get to that definition?
We had actually looked to our attorney counsel, Mr. Jim Priest, in that definition. He did not have any issues. What I will do prior to second reading is make sure that it, again, it is consistent. So we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. To me, and I'll comment, but one or more that raises a concern, so if someone has one mobile home, is that a mobile home park?
Typically, no.
So I think we should mimic state law on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Mr. Fag, on page two, there's a reference to environmentally sensitive areas. And I did get an inquiry that somehow or another, there would be a change in the status or what would be permissible ultimately at Oswett Canyon. Does what we're doing here tonight have any impact on Oswett?
No, it does not have any impact on Oswett Canyon. All we're doing is adding the environmentally sensitive area zone to the index at the beginning of the zoning code. For some reason, when it was adopted back in 2006, they never put it in the index. And again, this is just a simple correction.
Right. Thank you.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? I think none. We will open the floor for public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Mr. Mahia?
No public comment.
Okay. Seeing none, going, going, gone. We'll close the public comments.
The exciting...
I know.
...concept of zoning text amendments. I can't imagine that we didn't get a run of people on that.
Right up there with Planning Commission stuff. So, all right. Any comments by councilmembers? Okay. Motion to approve made by Councilmember Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Milton. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next item is under legislative, item 3A, Introduce an Ordinance to Amend the Palm Springs Municipal Code Relating to Public Integrity Disclosure Requirements. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, for your consideration, as a proposed amendment to the municipal code relating to public integrity disclosure requirements, it is recommended that the filing schedule be modified from a quarterly to a semi-annual basis for public official statements of economic interest and public integrity disclosure forms. This matter was presented to the City Council Subcommittee on Public Integrity, Mayor Protam-Corres and Councilmember Milton, and I defer to the subcommittee if they have any additional comments.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Holstig, seconded by Mayor Protam-Corres. Motion is on the floor.
Oh, yeah.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next item, under unfinished business, item 4A, Update on Recent Activities Related to the Desert Community Energy's Community Choice Aggregation Program and Council Input on the Default Options That May Be Offered to Rate Payers. Staff report, please.
Is that me in this case? I'm the representative, yeah, on the, on the JPA for Desert Community Energy. So, you know, as we're working on the launch of the program, I wanted just to sort of update the council and the public, but also make sure I'm getting direction that councils sort of still where we were. There were some changes due to public utility commissions, rulemaking that has some impact. But the basic idea is, if we make a decision over the next couple of months, this can be in effect, our Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program in the sort of spring of 2020. So that's when it would launch, assuming we move forward. The staff recommendation and what we already decided for the city previously was, we would do the 100% carbon-free default energy option. People would have the right to go down to a, a program that matches the product offered by Edison, which is 65% carbon-releasing, so it's mostly not green, at a slightly reduced cost from Edison, 100% carbon-free. It's probably a 3.5% to 4% increase, so people would have the choice which one they would want to do. The default would be what we had said, which was 100% carbon-free, but everyone would get many notices, and they could change their mind as it moved forward. People also have the right to opt out of the entire program and stay getting their power from Edison. Just for people who are new to this, the way the program works is you still get your power through Edison's lines. It's just the new entity, which is Palm Desert Cathedral City and Palm Springs, would be purchasing the power and the mix of power, but Edison would still be delivering the power. So it would be the same process. The governments aren't running your power companies, so it's meant as a way to either reduce costs for people who want to keep it one way or get us much closer to renewable energy the other way. So that's sort of where we are on it. Just wanted to do a quick update and see if anyone has a different view than from our prior conversations and is comfortable continuing forward as we are with a 100% carbon-free program.
Yeah. One question I do have, one thing I've never really understood on this, I think it's a... One thing I've never really understood on this, I think it's a great idea, by the way, and to allow people to make that choice, but when people... Could you explain why when people are not buying the power from Edison, they're buying it for someone else, but Edison is transmitting the power? There is a certain cost of infrastructure, the grid, transformers, et cetera. How is Edison reimbursed for those costs when you're buying your power from someone else?
So about half of what you get on your bill is all those other things. It's not the power you're buying. It's all the infrastructure, the delivery, all of that. So Edison still gets reimbursed for that, whether we're buying the power through this entity, or whether Edison's buying the power. So they get reimbursed either way. So they're cooperative with these now because the way the state law works, they have to be. But they still get... What they lose is they don't get their profit on buying the power.
Right.
That's... So that allows, in fact, already, we have over $4 million in reserves for this entity before it's even launched, from some buying and selling of power. And so that money can go back into the community for covering things like building a solar farm or insulation, and that'll be decided by the cities and the boards. So what would be profit actually goes into the cities. And the other real benefit of these is local control. So we get to make the decision. So once there's enough of a reserve built up with the money that would otherwise have gone to shareholders through the power, it allows us to look at whether we want to build more green energy, more wind farms, or more solar, and create jobs here, or what else we might even want to do.
Underground power lines.
Yeah. I don't know if it could be used for that, but that's a good question. I'm sure some neighborhoods would like that. Absolutely.
Councilmember Coors? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Choice Aggregation, or CCAs, have had tremendous success in numerous communities, not only in California but across the nation. And where CCAs have been implemented, we see individuals choosing the greenest option available very consistently. And one of the things that, in the survey that was done by C-VAG, is 65% of those from Palm Springs who were polled said they were willing to pay between 1% and 5% more for electricity to get a 100% carbon-free option. So one of the things that I was very pleased about when it came to CCAs is it increases choice for the customer. Not only do you have the choice between getting your power from the CCA or from the legacy utility company, you have within the CCA a choice of options regarding how much green energy you want to purchase. So I know that we want to proceed in a very prudent way to make sure that we do not get out ahead of what we can actually afford and make sure that we can deliver to the public. But I believe we should continue to do everything that we can to bring to Palm Springs a CCA option, hopefully in cooperation through the JPA.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Mayor Protem Coors for bringing this forward and attaching it. This is really helpful, and I found the polling and the studies fascinating and really helpful for us in deciding this issue, where our residents stand. Yeah, 81% of people in Palm Springs were willing to engage in the Community Choice Aggregation Program, and I also was inspired by the majority of people who are willing to pay a little bit more. I think that conversation, though, we have to remember, you know, we're talking about the front end, and it doesn't include the back end of paying more because of all of the costs of climate change and how it affects us. And so it's really important in this conversation. I completely support 100% carbon-free. I'm really excited that we have that option through the CCA, and we will deliver it to our residents. So thank you for your leadership. I know you've been a regional leader in this work, and it really shows, and it's really important. So thank you. My only question is the IBEW person, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. So unfortunately, I see that you... I heard your public comment. I see you emailed us, but I didn't... We didn't receive it ahead of the meeting. So, but this is a time-sensitive decision that we need to make because we need to give you direction for a future meeting. Is that right? Do you have any understanding of... It sounded to me, not knowing that much, that it might not really affect our decision tonight, but just the CCA moving forward in general and the total costs, right?
So tonight is mostly direction on...
Right.
CCA in general...
Which option?
And moving forward, you know, as soon as we can practically do it in a sound fiscal way, which we believe is in a year. But you have to start doing the paperwork almost a year ahead, so we need to start that process, and with a 100% carbon. But people have a choice not to do that program, to do the lesser program, or to opt out for Edison.
Thank you.
So that's all we need to do now. And the gentleman was at our meeting, and will be at our next meeting, and is, I believe, is meeting with staff as part of Desert Community Energy as well. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. So in support, that doesn't affect that decision to move forward with the CCA, which is so important for our community, and supporting the 100% carbon-free option for our residents. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that's just direction to staff. There is no vote on this. Okay, next item, under unfinished business. Item 4B, adoption of a resolution establishing procedures for the selection of a mayor and mayor pro tem. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, for your consideration, is a resolution proposing procedures for the selection of a mayor and mayor pro tem for implementation following the next general municipal election in November 2019. To summarize, the procedures call for the mayor and mayor pro tem to be the senior-most councilmembers that have not yet served as mayor or mayor pro tem. The terms for mayor and mayor pro tem are to be one year, and a council member may decline or defer service if desired. Alternative methods for selection are outlined in the staff report, and contained in your yellow folder is a survey of Coachella Valley cities and their methods for selecting the mayor and mayor pro tem. The proposed resolution is recommended by the City Council Subcommittee on the CVRA, which is the California Voting Rights Act, Mayor Protem Coors, and Councilmember Middleton, and I defer to the subcommittee for any additional comments.
Councilmember Holstidge?
All right. No, go ahead. I mean, we've discussed this before, so just getting comments from the rest of council would be good.
For Councilmember Roberts, this is one thing we wanted you here for, so we waited on this last time for you. Thank you for doing your work, doing the work on this, and it sounds like you really just looked at lots of different cities as models, but primarily Cathedral City and what they did. And in the additional materials, it looks like I asked the city clerk when he distributed it to you in the yellow folders, and it's here for the public as well, what other cities have done. You know, it's interesting because I think I'm thinking about all the work that we've done for the California Voting Rights Act and sort of our goals in doing that. I have some concerns about doing it by seniority and especially by highest vote getter. So I think that we actually cannot do it by a tiebreaker highest vote getter because of the differences in voters in the districts and the differences in voter turnout in the districts. So, you know, District 1 has only 3,600 registered voters, and District 2 has 5,700, for example. So, and this is complicated. It's hard to wrap my head around, and I have scribbles all over about trying to calculate every year and what that would look like. So, but for me, there will always be... Seniority, we're always going to have two people getting on council at the same time, and then three people getting on council at the same time. So for me, there always... Obviously, will always be a tie for seniority unless people drop off and one person is here for 17 years or something like that. But I'm just a bit confused about how that would work. It doesn't... How it works... There's a few things to decide. So there's how it's going to work in the interim before we're all districted, so the two years while we are still at large, and then how the rotation will go. So I couldn't quite understand from the resolution, is it that you're starting with the most senior and then evenly rotating every single year? So it goes 5, 4, 3, 2, 1? Or is it that it's going to be this complex calculation each time over who has most seniority and then who has the most votes? So I liked... I prefer the cities that are just straight, like the city of Woodland, that has 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1. I think the benefits are that, like, I can't decide... I can't figure out, sitting up here with all this information, how it will go in the next few years, in the next five or six cycles. It looks to me like it wouldn't probably be fair because it would prioritize seniority over who is the next in line, the district in line. So if I'm missing something, please let me know. We're going to have to have a tiebreaker if we do it on seniority. But I think what's important for residents, voters, city council members, candidates, is to be able to predict and know and understand, okay, how is this going to work for the cycle? And when... Which district is going to be mayor next? And it's not about the individuals, but each district has an equal right to have their representative be mayor. And so for that reason, that's why I lean towards having it just be evenly every year is a different one. I couldn't tell from the way the resolution's drafted if it meant you would just start one place and then go evenly. So I don't know if you have comments to that, but to me, still, it's not predictable for the average person or for me sitting up here. And I think I like that the published schedule where it's fair and predictable and clear and transparent for everyone will just take away a lot of the personality and jockeying for power and things like that, that if a more vague system might create. Is that your understanding of the system?
Microphone.
Not was intended. I think the intention, because there was the desire from the working group that someone at least be on council a full year before their mayor, is sort of to start with seniority for the first process, and then it would move on to a regular cycle. So no one would, right? Every fifth year, someone from that district would have the opportunity to be mayor if they wanted.
So I'm not sure if that's how it's written. It doesn't talk about cycling in the resolution, in my reading of it.
But, you know, let's have the conversation what people want, and then we'll write it in a way that...
Yeah.
Is clear to folks.
Make sure we get it written. One of the things that we clearly were trying to do with this is to remove personality and to make this very predictable. And I want to thank the city clerk for all of the research that he did. We looked at a number of different cities in terms of their model for how they did it. Seniority is used far more frequently than I could find any other way of defining what is the order going to be. One of the things that we established in here, anyone who serves for five years will have the opportunity to serve as mayor. And so it will always work that way. I think there, and I'll reinforce what we got from the working group, I believe that having sat on city council for over a year now, it is helpful to have the experience of sitting on council before being responsible for presiding at meetings. And therefore, there is a value that comes with some seniority. Now, it's conceivable someone could be mayor in their second year under the system, depending on how elections go. So I feel very strongly that we should have seniority as a part of the criteria in making a determination, but that only applies to what the order is going to be. And this order begins in December 2019. So on December 2019, when the new council takes place, whoever happens to be the most senior individual would have an opportunity to serve as mayor. We do create in here an opportunity, which we saw in other cities, for an individual to defer or to decline being the mayor or mayor pro tem. And there are any number of very legitimate reasons why someone would want to defer or decline. One of the things that we were trying to be very cautious of, though, is that if someone makes a decision, "I just don't want to do one of those jobs," then you are taking yourself out of the rotation. But if you defer, we did not want an individual to be able to defer in order to somehow or another set themselves up in the rotation so that at the time an election year came up, they were in a position that they would not otherwise be in. And that's why we created the provision that in deferring, when you come back into the rotation, you need the approval of the entire city council to come back into the rotation. There are numerous different ways that ties can be broken, and yes, there will always be people coming on city council likely at the same time. It is not guaranteed that more than one individual will be. The method that's suggested here, whoever has the most votes, is what's commonly used. And it's more commonly used than any other method, and it is a very predictable method in terms that it does define. That does create some issues here in which we do not have exactly the same number of people in each district. We don't know how many people will run in each district. There could be two people running in a district. There could be three. There could be five. So whoever gets the most votes is in part a product of how many people are in a district. It's also a part of how many people are running against one another.
Councilman... Are we ready for Councilmember Roberts? Councilmember Roberts?
So, having served as mayor and having gone through this process in another city, I may be the only one up here who has that experience. And what I learned from that experience, which I offer here, is I come from a place of more flexibility. So how we handled it there was that the mayor and mayor pro tem were elected by the council. And the idea was very simple. You needed to serve at least one year to have a little experience under your belt. You needed to be elected by the majority of the council. The idea was rotation. The idea was... The concept was to give anybody on the council who really wanted it the opportunity. But we didn't lock it in stone. And what we found is that some people don't want to do it, and there are times that sometimes somebody shouldn't do it. And we had those two situations occur. The only real hard regulation that we added was that you couldn't serve more than once during your term unless everyone else who wanted to had already served, or the council by vote felt that that was the right choice. And because it was always a voting majority, it was really more about how the council works together and who they see and trust to essentially serve as chair. Because the way it is now, even today, and where we're headed, this is a mayor position that has no more power than one vote on the city council. The mayor does serve as chair. And the chair position is an important position because it sets a tone for the council, and hopefully it shows a level of leadership in dealing with disputes and issues and drama, some of which we have certainly shared ourselves. So at the end of the day, I would make this... I would loosen this up even more and simply say that the only real restriction, give yourself the flexibility to vote for one another, have one year of experience, and obviously, anybody can define or defer. one another, have one year of experience, and obviously, anybody can define or defer, and hopefully, no one will serve more than once in one term. Now, having said that, if that doesn't have any interest with the rest of the council, the recommended, you know, the staff report recommendation to me works fine, it's just slightly more restrictive than that, and I would go with that. I think it works much better than forcing rotation. And I think in some of these situations it is, and it can get complex. So in the end, I would say, give yourself flexibility.
You were up here. Oh. Okay, any other comments?
Just a quick one, and, and I agree with Councilmember Roberts, keeping some flexibility is, is very important. This is a resolution, so I think some of the circumstances that you described in Sausalito, those are unique things happen that is difficult to predict.
Count, yeah.
And as this is a resolution, it is possible for a future city council, dealing with emergency situations, dealing with something that would be very unexpected, to make a change in these processes as they need to.
I would suggest, and of course, you're right, you know, in any situation, the council can, can do an urgency. But I will tell you that in a heated moment like that, it can create a lot of turmoil, rather than just having the flexibility to take an action. But to having to rewrite your process or do an urgency in the middle of a drama with, with, it, it, it can really turn things over and create, you know, a lot of discomfort with the community as well, because it's, it can turn into a, and I've seen that happen in, in other situations, where you have a high political drama going on, and you start to lose trust from the community. And so, again, that's why I would suggest keeping it more flexible, rather than having to change it in the middle of a potential political meltdown. But again, either way works. Well, I mean, you know what I meant, yeah. Yeah, political, political meltdowns work because they're gonna happen anyway.
Councilmember Holstich?
Did you want to add something, Councilmember Middleton?
Just very quickly, I think one of the things that all of us are saying is, we want the process to be predictable, and we do not want politicking playing any role in this process.
That's certainly the goal.
Yeah. How to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this, this actually is a really important conversation and decision for us right now, because I think, just like districts, how we adopted a map, that will stand, it will be changed, but essentially, it's not gonna be completely changed. And I think this actually is the first time that we're deciding this as, as a city. And so how we do it really matters going forward. I agree with the one-year requirement, if that's the point of seniority, I think, of course. It's hard to chair a meeting before serving, so I think that that's a good requirement. I'm, I'm strongly opposed to the vote numbers breaking ties, and it, it's complicated. I hear, I hear you, that I hadn't thought that fully through, that maybe there would be six or 10 candidates, I mean, things out of people's control. So if it's an arbitrary way to pick someone, if there's a tie, maybe that's fine. I'm concerned that, you know, we did this in the goal of following the California Voting Rights Act, and in diversity, equity, inclusion, and making sure everyone can serve, we're gonna have a lot of firsts for mayor because of the system. I'm concerned that the seniority and issue prioritizing seniority, that prioritizes people who can serve for a long period of time, who, you know, are, can get reelected multiple times, and then especially the vote count is gonna, you know, disproportionately affect communities, candidates of color, voters of color. So I'm really, I mean, looking at all the demographic data for the districts, I'm really concerned that that's not the right way to go. I know that that's what's commonly used, but also, that's for a lot of cities that aren't at districts yet, the Coachella Valley cities that do that, I know Cathedral City did, but also cities that don't share our values and all of the work that we've done on this. I know the working group, the California Voting Rights Act Working Group actually recommended what, what JR suggested, just open, flexible, so that the council can decide their chair. That comes with benefits and cons as well, because there could be implicit bias there. People don't vote for the woman, or whoever it is, for certain reasons. So I think there's pros and cons to both. It's hard, because people will have four years in their terms, and actually, this coming term will be three years. And we also cut our term short by a year as well. So in, whatever we do, whoever's elected isn't, not everyone's gonna have an opportunity to be mayor in their term, unless they, in, in four years, since there's five districts. So, you know, that's, it's, it's hard to work around that to make it fair for everyone. But I, I, I would support a flexible system over a system that prioritizes seniority and, and vote, highest vote gets, which I just do not think is fair in the map that we've created, in the system that we've created, and will maybe entrench inequalities in a way that we don't want to.
Mayor Pro Tem, of course.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess let's take both of those. One is on seniority. So I, I think the goal here was, right, yes, if you're only on the council for four years, no matter what system we do, there's a chance you won't serve as mayor, right, in that rotation. So the way, this was thought, and it was based on, you know, other cities, and I think I'm open to more flexibility as well, is, you know, you start with the most senior, but that person doesn't get to serve again if there are other people who haven't served until at least five years. So it's not, I don't think it's creating the, I think some of the concerns you're worried about that way, because it would just go, you know, if there's someone junior, they would still get to serve next if that, the more senior person has served in the last four years. So it's not, you're always, the senior person gets to serve first. So first, right, okay.
But the way that it works, I understand that, thank you.
Right.
But the way that it works out, like, I, I did it till 2026, under your resolution.
Okay.
And, again, I, I mean, it gets confusing, and it's hard, because there's lots of variables about who will rerun, and who will be reelected, and who will, how many, who will be from each district, and what the seniority is. I can't predict it. I, I can't determine what that schedule will be in five years with this resolution. Can, can you determine that?
Yeah.
And we could publish it so that people who are running, and candidates, and voters would understand the schedule for mayor?
Your microphone.
You know, one of the things that you need, that I think may be missed here, is you can't repeat as mayor until every other individual has an opportunity to be mayor. No one can be, unless somebody declines or defers, so let's try to take that out of it. You can't do it more than once every five years. So whoever happens on December 2019 to have the most seniority will get the first shot at it. Then in 2020, it'll go to number two. In 2021, it'll go to number three, and so on. Whoever started in 2020 does not get an opportunity to repeat until everyone else has had an opportunity to serve. You can't, everybody gets that chance. There is a possibility that someone who is elected could come up on a rotation to where they needed a fifth year in order to get on, to have the opportunity to serve as mayor. But they, assuming they're reelected, they would get that opportunity in their fifth year. But there's, there's five individuals that have a chance to serve, and were generally running in four-year terms.
So I understand what you were trying to do in reading, in just having a blank slate of me reading this resolution and trying to understand how that cycle would work. I don't get there. I think part of it is it's, your resolution is based on council members who've served, as opposed to districts, so it doesn't actually write in the fairness between districts.
So let me ask a question on that, because, and that's the question. So if, let's just say, District Four, right, has a new person every four years.
Right.
Right? So do they get precedence over someone who's, and there's, has been for five years from serving again? That, right? So is it the district, or is it, does everyone get a shot every five years?
It's people, you've got to.
Right? That's the question, I think what you're asking.
Exactly.
Or you've got to decide whether it's people or districts.
Right.
In that scenario, it's districts. But I think the districts have sent people.
Your mic.
So the way we're headed is districts are sending people here. The council's already, the city's already fully represented, or the districts are already fully represented. That person's been elected and sent. So that person already has the position of being a representative. Let's call the mayor situation again icing on the cake, or just, it's, you know, it's, you get the same pleasure in serving mayor as we do when we go serve for, on, on C-VAG, you know, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, I'm trying to use less acronyms. So it's, it's really sort of, just sort of a, it's another level, it makes it a little more interesting than what we already do. But I would suggest, again, that you make it more about people, meaning focus on, on the people aspect of it, and I think it balances it and adds a little bit of fairness to it, simply because if you're rotating two council members and three council members every two years, each council member could have an opportunity to serve as mayor in their term once. And unless you have an anomaly, that person really wouldn't have an opportunity to serve again. It would require an anomaly. And the other thing I want to suggest to you, from what I've seen, not only in my own experience, but also witnessing other cities that use this system, or this much flexibility, is it usually kind of works itself out, much in the way that we're expected, and if, if we're worth our salt, have enough respect for one another, and work closely, that we can kind of solve that up here. If you can't, you got much bigger problems. And I haven't seen a council like that, fortunately. Maybe Dr. Reddy has, maybe others with a lot more experience have. Peter's shaking his head no. But at the end of the day, I guess the main reason I would still stand by more flexibility is it tends to work itself out. And in, in a two and three, in, in, when you have cycles of two or three people being elected every two years, you're covered on the ability to be mayor, or to serve in those positions. So now, this first run is confusing. That one, you're just gonna have to iron out, because everything got, you know, everything got turned upside down. Funny enough, I had to serve, when I served in Sausalito, we went the other way. We, we changed from spring to fall. I ended up with another year, or not quite another year, but, so, you know, but then, this is a true anomaly, and will never happen again, as long as we stay with the system. Anyway.
And I, I think that is the argument for flexibility, because I do think that people will hold the council accountable. So they'll say, well, you know, they'll hold us accountable and ask those types of questions. And, and I think that is an argument towards flexibility, as opposed to having it so regimented that it's, it's hard to predict, it's hard to understand, and it doesn't allow that flexibility.
Okay, I was just gonna add one thing on to this. Well, I totally agree with Councilmember Holstich on number of voters, number of votes is not really relevant. It was when we were running at large, because everybody was running in the same pool, and so.
Right.
The person who got the most votes, it was, it was actually a measure. In districts, it's not. One thing, I, this brings up a discussion we just had at C-VAG recently, an executive committee, because in C-VAG, the, the chairmanship rotates every year between the cities. It's not the individual, it's the city. And in this case, we have districts. So, you know, having the model here, as Councilmember Holstich said, like the one that was in here from Woodland, where it's by districts, makes sense, because that way, each district will have the opportunity to be represented by this, the person who's the mayor of, of the city. And I know in C-VAG, we just had the situation where the city that came up, Indio, for chairmanship, their representative, their mayor wasn't reelected. So, so, so they didn't jump to the next city, they actually, they actually, you know, were gonna put someone from that city into the spot, because the discussion was that you're not, it's not the person that matters, it's the, it's the city that's on, representing on the C-VAG. So I think that same philosophy should go with us here, where it's not the person, it is the district. So the district should have a fair share at this. Now, as Councilmember Roberts said, the first time, it's gonna have to do some, some computing here, but then after that, it should, it should be able to get into a rotation. But if it gets to the, the city comes up, and it's their turn, and the person is brand new, they don't have a year, you'd have, you could maybe, you know, make an arrangement to skip that. But this, we should, I think councils should look at this, because of all we've been through, it's districts, the, the representative position of mayor should be, or the, whatever we'd call it, as mayor, should be evenly rotated between, between the districts. It's only fair. And by the way, one thing I'd like to add is, you know, when you, when somebody, there's a lot of stuff you have to juggle when you're chairing these meetings, but one thing that's really helped is, a couple of years ago, three years ago, we, as a council, because I've, there was no guidance when we came in three years ago, but the, the resolution we did on the council rules of procedure really make it easier, because it actually lays out exactly what you do. And also, having a good city clerk who can, I mean, I go by, see the city clerk before the meeting every time we have a meeting, and I sit with him and say, is there anything special about the meeting? And he, you know, we, we talk about what things don't have to be voted on, so he still helps me out after three years on, on meetings. So those are two things that will help people as they rotate through this position.
Well, one of the things that we've always tried to do is make sure we get this right. And so if there's a proposal that someone would like to make, we could do that. What I would suggest, though, is that we continue this till the next meeting, give everyone an opportunity to identify what their proposals would be in terms of changes to this. Really sit down and think through, and, and communicate those, those recommendations to the city clerk, if we can, so that we can compare every, every idea on this, and then come back.
I mean, I, I, I think we're kind of there now, but if you want to continue it for more thought, I'm, I'm game for that.
Let's make sure we get it right.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to continue. Motion made by Councilmember Holstich, seconded by Councilmember Middleton, motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay. Next item is under, under new business, item five, Declaration of Local Emergency and Report of Emergency Debris Removal Cleanup, Road Repairs, Building Remediation and Repairs Related to the February 14, 2019 Flood Pursuant to Section 20168 of the California Public Contract Code and Section 7.04.040 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code. And the city manager has a presentation here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Following up on our report to you at the last council meeting, this item actually is the formality of affirming and ratifying the local emergency, which was declared by the county and also by the governor, which opens up the door to having us reimbursed for our We did receive slightly less than four inches of rain at the airport. I would venture to guess that that was a lot higher as you reached the mountain, especially where I live in Mountain Gate, near the foothills, it didn't seem to end the whole time. I was told by Rootside County Flood Control District that the rain gauges up near Idlewild recorded over nine inches of rain, and in some cases, that exceeded what is called the 100-year event, coupled with, it was a warm storm, and it melted all the snow that had fallen on the previous storms before that. So all of that led to some significant runoff, which affected all of the different washes and rivers in, in Palm Springs. We did an initial total damage assess- rivers in, in Palm Springs. We did an initial total damage assessment for the county, which was used for the declaration at, at the state's level, which approaches almost $2 million. Right now, we're fronting that money with the city's risk fund, which is essentially funded through the general fund. And as we mentioned, now with the governor's declaration, it opens our opportunity to recover those costs. So as we showed last time, there was so much debris coming out of the mountain, that if you don't know, there's a large flood control basin at where the, the Tribe's Visitor Center is, at Takwitz Creek. That, that was developed, I believe, in the eighties, with the intent of doing what it did during the storm, which was to hold back all of that debris. But there was so much, that I think this was the first time, that it completely filled and spilled over into Takwitz Creek. So if you were watching the flood coming through Takwitz Creek, all that debris then spilled through Takwitz Creek and caused all the damage you see here, at the different roadways that cross Takwitz Creek, which includes the golf course, and Farrell Drive, and El Cielo, and then downstream to Golf Club. So Golf Club, the low-water crossing there worked, it's just that the water spread so far, that it ate into the asphalt on the, what would be the north side of that crossing. And of course, Farrell was just obliterated. The cost for that repair is about a half million dollars, and then, of course, the adjacent Mesquite Country Club golf course has had some major damage, and that upper right-hand photo is their private golf cart bridge that ended up almost in our street. And that's just another photo on, on the left there, showing the, the east side of the street, and the scouring effect of that water, where it undermined the asphalt. So Araby, Araby's still closed, I believe, or it may be reopening soon. I, I forgot to get an update. But the Palm Canyon Wash, again, naturally, that wash is one where whenever it floods, it deposits sediment. And again, there was so much water flowing, that it was bank-to-bank, as you approached East Palm Canyon Drive, and had essentially eliminated that plateau of vacant land that was next to Rim Road, to the point that the water was lapping at the edge of Rim Road, and caused us to issue a precautionary evacuation order for the Mobile Home Park, just, just down from Rim, Rim Road. Riverside County Flood Control District is now working to do an emergency, essentially, emergency project starting potentially next week, because so much sediment was deposited, they estimate 250,000 yards have to be removed from the Palm Canyon Wash. And basically, the carrying capacity of that wash has, has been eliminated. So if you were to go look, you can see that their levee, there's only a foot or so of freeboard, where there was six or seven feet for the, you know, for the 100-year storm. And so it's, it's, it's an emergency, and so there will be an impact to the community, because there will be thousands of trucks going in and out of the Palm Canyon Wash to remove all of that sediment. Luckily, I think they've made arrangements with Robertson's Ready Mix down in Coachella, who's taking all this material, because it's actually great material for them to use, so. But in the meantime, so the Araby was basically covered with five, six feet of sediment, and parts of it was lost, and so we're working to get that reopened. And then, of course, the Whitewater River flowed and damaged all of our three aggregate crossings on Viscino, Gene Autry, and Indian, with Indian suffering the brunt of it, because, because of the, the way the water flows, it hits the Granite Company borrow pit, which has that berm they developed, and then forces the water south along the road, and then, then out into the river. The water, I mean, this was the most I've ever seen. It actually ate into that berm, uncovered an old car that had been buried and, and lost for years, and it just, it, it shows the, the power of that water. And of course, here's a reminder, please do not drive around road barricades and road closed signs, because you will get stuck, and you could lose your life. And so, here's a truck that tried to make their way down Gene Autry Trail and got stuck. And then, of course, we, as we mentioned, the water was so much, that it came around Angel Cove, around the, this is the area near Windy Point, and then just basically drained down Highway 111 in the southbound lanes, depositing a bunch of material and causing damage. And then this is actually Chino Creek, where it crossed over the, the northbound lanes. And so this was what led to the closure of 111. So it was really, what do they call it in LA when they close a freeway? Carmageddon for us, because all of our access was, was shut down for that period of time. And, and this is where I was mentioning in the low, in the, in the right-hand side, that was where the water was coming, was flowing around that point from Angel Cove, and then down 111, and causing all that damage. And here again, in the bottom right, is, is an awesome photo, to be honest with you, because it shows that what I mentioned was that, that debris basin was completely filled, and that just caused all that debris and runoff to just flow right over the spillway and cause the damage it's caused in the downstream. This was Spencer's. They had a natural waterfall, and it, and Bristow served as it was intended. So if people have always questioned, why are the curbs 12, 15 inches high? It's because of this waterfall you see on the left-hand side, that comes out of the mountain. So that basically is our report. I do have Brandon Alexander, I want to bring him up, because our public golf courses were really significantly damaged. The Resort Course, which is the course closest to El Cielo, had the most damage, versus the Legends Course, which is the original course further downstream, near Golf Club. So Brandon, would you like to give us an update?
Steve Leonard, he's a regional manager out of Scottsdale. He helps me out from time to time. Welcome. So, we had three to four feet of debris on the Legend Golf Course. Our team was able to remove that. We opened that golf course approximately eight days later, which was good to get the revenue back. Resort Course is still closed as of today. As Marcus mentioned, a lot of the structure damage is cart paths, turf, large pieces of material just completely washed away. Plan there is to get some temporary fencing put up, that we're renting, so we can get that golf course open back up to play, where it's safe for participants playing golf, or anybody that might wander out there at this point. Plan is hopefully to have it open by Monday. Fencing's supposed to start going up tomorrow. Our insurance broker, our property insurance broker, they have their chief adjuster here on site. We met with him today. He'll be here tomorrow and Friday as well. He brought in HMI, which is a representative of the market, for the insurance company, and they brought in a golf course consultant. Their role is to look at scope of work, try to decide what is it, in fact, that we have, what we need to do to rebuild it as it was, and what the cost associated that, with that is. That may take 15 to 30 days, we were told. But like I said, they are here now, and evaluating that. BI has also been engaged with their insurance company, that's Business Interruption. That's for the loss in revenue we've incurred while the golf course is closed. They have our financials now. They're aware of our situation, when we're trying to be open on both courses, and what the result of that is. And the only other thing I wanted to share with you was that before this event, we were having our best year ever. We were $250,000 ahead of budget, as of the end of January financials, and that got washed away in 14 days. So that's where we are right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
And I just want to point out, you know, Century Golf is our operator, but the city funds the operations of the golf course. So the losses to the city's bottom line, and their property insurance will help mitigate that loss for the city. So we're looking forward to finding out how that is resolved. Those insurance proceeds go back into the revenue of the golf operations, and, and cover those costs. So those costs are our costs. But the, the point of this item is, again, for council's consideration to adopt the resolution related to the emergency.
Any questions? Okay. We have a motion to approve made by Mayor Pro Tem Coors, seconded by Councilmember Roberts. Motion's on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, the next item, I believe, Councilmember Middleton mentioned wanting to table this, but let me read it first. Public art relocation of the sculptures, Butch, I Feel and Squeeze, by artist John Clement, to the Takwitz Canyon Way median between Farrell Drive and El Cielo Road. Let's go ahead and have a staff report, then we can discuss Councilmember Milton's recommendation.
You did want a staff report, Mayor?
Yep, just go ahead and do the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. The sculpture by artist John Clement, were loaned to the city from Bushline Moet Fine Arts Limited. And that was for a limited period of time, approximately 18 months. But what had happened was, the sculptures ended up being sold, and, to an extent, abandoned. So despite city's efforts to contact the new owner, and facilitate either them taking possession of the sculptures, or making some other accommodations, the city ended up holding them on-site, paying for their maintenance and cleaning, and eventually accumulated a bill to the owner of approximately $54,000. Now, we have just very recently negotiated a settlement, due to the good work of our city attorney, wherein the, the new owner has agreed to forego any ownership rights in the sculptures. And with that happening, it freed up a longstanding request by the Public Arts Commission to locate those sculptures on the Takwitz median. And that's where we're at.
Okay. Any comments, questions, recommendations? Councilmember Milton?
My reasoning for suggesting that we continue this to the next meeting, the locations that are being proposed on the medians along Takwitz, I get that they're attractive, and they would provide an artistic approach from the airport into the downtown area. Those are very narrow medians, and these are pretty vibrant and tall structures. We had experience when we went through the change of Takwitz Canyon, from grass to desert scape, that we had made some plant material choices that were rather tall. And ultimately, those had to be removed, because drivers were reporting to us that they were having difficulty seeing. And my fear is that we may be making the same mistake again, and creating what could be a traffic hazard with these locations. I did reach out to the Chair of the Public Arts Commission, Anne Schiffer, and to give her an alert that I had some concerns from a safety standpoint. She's in New York for her daughter's wedding, and said to me that the Public Arts Commission was not absolutely certain that these were the locations that, that fit best. And so, my cause in recommending that we continue it, is to give public arts a second opportunity, make sure these are the locations that they want, as well as to make certain, from the police department and traffic engineers, that we are not creating a public safety issue here.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the same concerns, and I just didn't see a lot of information here. I was trying to look to see, I know that there's a description of how big the medians are, and how large the art pieces are compared to that, but I, I sort of had a hard time also determining, just based on the attachment to at the end, just an aerial view, it's hard to really see. Because some of those problems is a problem, depending on the intersection and how you turn into the main street. So I don't know if engineering or other departments looked at those types of issues and are making this recommendation, or if we need to do further study on that.
I would note, and Marcus, you can assist here, but that was part of the question and part of this analysis. And Marcus, I believe you concluded that it was not going to be an issue at these locations?
Well, we looked, yeah, we looked at the physical ability of these things to sit where they're at, and I was told that they can be accommodated in those pre-constructed pads that were provided in the median. Given the type of the, the squiggles, we didn't consider that they would be obstructing, fully obstructing the view of traffic. The one, the one location at Farrell, I mean, each of these sits back from the turnpocket where you're turning, and the question is, from the other direction, would they represent a restriction? And so, you know, it, it would be difficult to say until they're in place. They certainly could be reoriented to see, you know, because, because of the nature of the squiggles, whether they completely obstruct the view. But it's something we can continue to pursue, if that's your desire, to evaluate.
Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Coors?
Thank you, Mayor. My only question was, so, if I'm reading this right, the Public Arts Commission voted to put them here three years ago. Has it gone back to the Arts Commission since, or is this, because I'm wondering why the Chair would have a concern if this was recent. But from the report, it looks like this is three years old, and just making its way here now.
Yeah, and let me, I'll, I'll handle this. So, I've been, I've lived with these for over 10 years about, and
Do you like them?
The city council wanted to get rid of them long ago, two councils ago, maybe, three councils ago.
Not us.
When the Arts Commission really originally did this yesterday, it was this large time leg, was because we couldn't determine ownership. The, the owner of that, we, we kept trying to get them to come and remove them. They were non-responsive. And what I said to the city attorney is that the Arts Commission wants this council to, to place these, but we don't have ownership, and we need to resolve this. So either they're abandoned, either we have to do what we have to do formally to make sure that they're abandoned, so council can act. And this has been a, a long, long process. So, so here we are. I, I, my sense on this is, these are large objects, and I don't know why we would want to potentially even expose ourselves to this. I don't think it's the right fit, but again, I'm not the artist on this. The other thing I'm concerned with, that's another object, that if a car goes left on the median, it could hit it. And so, my recommendation is that perhaps the Arts Commission gives an alternate site. But
Okay, and I think it makes sense. Let's maybe send it back to the Arts Commission, with a little more input on the traffic issue, and the issues you raised, and Marcus raised. I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Roberts?
Does the artist have interest in taking them back?
We wish that this artist did, but no. And then there's been a, a new art, it was sold to someone else, and they don't apparently have an interest. But the artist, the artist has abandoned, essentially abandoned them, and all our, all our attempts to the artist, we've gone, either what, just, Jay hasn't responded, or was not interested?
The art pieces were actually sold to a developer that went under, which gave the artist an opportunity to reclaim them at that time, but they chose not to.
And I would say, before they were sold, there was at least a three or four-year period there, where the artist just was non-responsive. And so we considered them abandoned, but we didn't formalize it until now.
So I want to throw out something, I know this is gonna come back, but I just want to throw out a, a concept, if we're gonna send this back. You know, perhaps we should look at this about, the way museums look at this about the way museums look at art, that they're not sure they still want or need. Maybe we want to consider de-assessing these. And that means they could be sold off. If we own them outright, or perhaps other cities are interested, or developers are interested in using them, that should be thrown into the mix as well. There are a lot of these around town. I'm thinking of a doctor's office that has one up against their wall and up on the north end of town. There's, there's so many of these around town. So perhaps the problem is, we're trying to find places for them, but maybe we have enough of them. Maybe it's time to get rid of a few of them, or let other cities or other environments enjoy them. And I would just like to, I would, if the council's in agreement with me on this, throw that as an option to the Arts Commission, is that we don't have to keep them. They can go elsewhere.
Do we have a methodology, do we have a methodology in place to do that?
Sure, certain, certainly, sure.
If they're abandoned, they're now ours to do what we want with, correct?
If, for example, if they were sold, the dollars could go into the arts fund for them to use in other ways.
Excellent.
Right. And maybe have a liaison from Parks and Rec at the Arts Commission meeting in case they have an interest in, with their parks plan. So have them at that discussion.
Or we could...
That's just an option.
Donating them to, I mean, it's, I like the squiggles personally. I'm pro squiggles. However, perhaps a private owner or developer would want to take them so that they can put them where they see fit.
We could find a fund for that.
We could find a fund for that.
Do we need a squiggle subcommittee?
No, I don't think so.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, so what's, we're continuing this?
So I think we're sort of in agreement that we should let the city manager see if there's a way to put them on the market and sell them.
Look at the options.
Or the Art Commission might be willing to take that on as a project, because it would then give them funds to do some, some other new and exciting things. And I think that's the beauty of de-assessing art. It gives you new opportunities.
I think we should send that back, all of that host of options, to the Arts Commission with staff involved, so that we can talk about some of those safety concerns as well.
So Councilman Middleton, should we just table, you want to make a motion to table this indefinitely, to a time uncertain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Time uncertain, back to the Public Arts Commission, with the full range of options available to Public Arts to recommend to us.
Okay. Have a motion to approve. Motion approved made by Councilman Milton, second by Councilmember Holstage. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. I actually think we should put the babies going down Takwitz, you know, on, in the Senate. That'd freak all the tourists out when they arrive.
Maybe the squiggles could become bracelets for Maryland.
Okay, item 5C, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Request for Proposal, RFP Process Discussion for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Fiscal Year 2019-20, CDBG Program, 45th Program Year. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Once again, it's time to issue the request for proposal for community development block grant funds. And we wanted to check in with the council on the process. Also, want to give you just a quick refresher on some of the requirements and restrictions on the CDBG funds. They are required to be used towards benefiting low, moderate income persons, preventing or eliminating slums and blight, and meeting urgent local community needs. One important change in the process this year is that we are using automated process called Zoom Grants, which would disseminate and allow for review of proposals electronically. So that would hopefully make all the paper chasing a little easier on everyone. We have Neil Cook here with us to answer the more detailed questions having to do with some of the funding requirements and restrictions. I'll conclude the presentation.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Corz?
Great, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for staff. And the reason I asked for this sort of be a discussion before everything started was just so we could give some input and some questions. So the six-member Citizens Advisory Committee is in accordance with the Citizen Participation Plan. So can you just explain, so is that, are those six categories for participation, those representatives set by HUD, or is that something we've set?
The requirement of the Citizen Participation Plan is a HUD requirement. However, the council and the local government has the flexibility of identifying the representation. Typically, the Citizen Participation Plan is a part of the five-year consolidated plan. So this coming year, we will be in our fifth year. So come 2021, we're going to go through the process of establishing a new five-year plan. So there is the flexibility, the opportunity to relook at the representation. But over the years, the city has identified these special populations and the three city commissions to make up that Citizen Participation Plan.
And I appreciate that from at least the first year, for some of us, we have changed the people in those roles, so they're not applicants, which I think was a really good change. So I really appreciate the work to make that happen. And I think we brought up last year, one of the concerns of this group is, given council goal setting that we've done in past years, in which money for housing for low-income people and homelessness, that we have no one with any of those backgrounds on that group. And that's not been typically what's been getting, getting funding. And considering the three objectives are low, moderate income persons, preventing slums and blight, and urgent community development needs, those seem to be the city's top priorities, yet that's not, we don't have a representative from those on here. Not that the other things aren't important. So that was one issue, and I don't know if that's something we could change this year, or we have to wait a year for.
We would have to wait a year, but I would remind you that some of those individuals are very involved in the Affordable Housing Homeless Standing Council Subcommittee. The concerns of the park system about the users and maybe some obstacles that they're faced with, with the homeless population. So I do think there's a cross blend of individuals that have those interests and those concerns.
And I guess the other question is, I know city departments apply for these, and so, and that's for the city manager, is how you're going to determine, or if you want an ad hoc subcommittee to work with, on what are going to be the priorities that the city's going to ask for, that's sort of aligned with what council and city goals are.
And some direction that would be helpful there is, relatively, are the pot of dollar resources is so small. Traditionally, council has welcomed departments to submit, and we have, particularly like, I believe, ADA improvements.
Capital projects.
Capital projects. But, but the more we do, obviously, it competes with the other nonprofits. So now, we would certainly welcome to apply for more things. And so I think if that's the direction I'm getting, we will. But just knowing that that is in competition...
Yeah, I'm not sure it's more, it's prioritizing. So, you know, what are the top two or three the city wants to apply for that make the most sense, given the goals, as opposed to having 10 applications from the city, for example. So, and maybe that's something you could just work with two of us sort of on.
I would, I would point that the challenge of that is, the community development block grant funds are for low to moderate income census tracts.
Right.
Are also targeted, are targeted to low to moderate clientele. So there's very few census tracts within the city that are now low to moderate. The prime example, for a number of years, the Desert Highland Neighborhood Area had been a census tract of its own and had met, exceeded the 51%. But when the census tracts were redesigned, re-proportionate, it included the Mountain Gate subdivision. So the, the low to moderate population decreased dramatically. So those are the challenges we're faced with. Most of the city projects through the street department are, are low to moderate census tracts.
Yeah, okay. And just the last thing is, and I appreciate there's, you know, the groups that are on here, but if anyone on council thinks there are other groups that need to get noticed of this, it would probably be, we can send you that.
That, as well as your earlier point about the council grants and sponsorship applications are now available. I could seek advice from the city clerk's office as to what organizations have participated in that program. And that's a point well taken. Our federal community development block grants this past year was $421,000, whereas our own city grants and sponsorship program, it, it's doubled that. It's 817,000. You know the strings attached to any government grant program, where there's greater flexibility and latitude with the city funds.
Absolutely.
A lot of the organizations have been more diverted to the council's.
Right. And actually, a lot of the organizations get from both, right, the ones who get the block grants. Okay. And the other thing is, I think, just making sure, given, as I look at this, and I think of people who might have been the email address for these organizations, and this came up last year, no longer work at those organizations, and to make sure we're getting, that someone's actually receiving it in those organizations, whether it's a follow-up phone call, or it needs to be, you know, mail to the CEO or whatever it is of each organization, because I think that sometimes happens. It goes into an empty email account. And so, just because the staff changes. So to just make sure the follow-up, which I think you did more or less.
We can do that as well. And it is triggered within the system as far as delivery. If it bounces back, then we do make a follow-up.
Okay, that's all I had.
Just for clarification, that we can't change the makeup of the advisory until the end of the five-year period?
That's a part of our five-year consolidated plan. So we can redesign, re-assess the Citizen Participation Plan and have that as a part of the five-year plan.
Okay, but we can't do it until 20...
The next process.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Middleton? Okay. Okay, this is just a discussion item. So, ready to go to the next item? Next item, General Fund Ending Fiscal Year 2017-18, a general fund mid-year fiscal year 2018-19 budget update. I believe our finance director, Nancy Polly, has a report for us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have a brief overview of the mid-year budget for you. Off your staff report, I'm going to jump around a little bit. In the general fund ended fiscal year 1718 with unrestricted reserve of $21.4 million compared to the projected of $20.9 million, which was an increase of $493,000. As mentioned on the February 20th meeting, the auditors gave a brief overview of the annual financial report. In there, they had mentioned to you the increases that were happening in CalPERS and also into the OPEB. In, from 1718, the CalPERS liability increased by $18.2 million, and the OPEB increased by $34.5 million. Of the payments that we, our normal payments from 1617, we were at $16 million and went to $17 million in 2017-18, which is a $1.8 million increase. And for this fiscal year, we are going to be at $21.6 million, which is a $3.6 million increase. I would like to now go to my PowerPoint presentation. And for cash reserve summary, which I mentioned, we ended the unrestricted ending balance at 630 of 18 was $21.4 million, 20.6% of a reserve. Our estimated amount for 630 of 19 is 24.5 with a reserve of 21.6. And as noted, CalPERS reserve for future cost ending 630 of 19 is going to be at $10,250,000. Make sure I get this. On the next slide, you have six-month comparison of revenues. We went from 31% to 35% and an increase of approximately $6.2 million. We'll go to the next page, and I will go over the major revenues with you on page number four. So property tax, we have an increase of $400,000 over the prior year, and TOT is $1.2 million, and sales tax is an increase of $2.3 million. So this will show you also the percentages above. This does not include Measure J sales tax. On page five, you will see Measure J sales tax revenue, excuse me, the increase from prior year, we are up 35, from 35, from 34, excuse me, to 35%. And this is for the six-month comparison. On page six, you will note the vacation and hotel motel rentals. Those are going up approximately $3 million per year from 1516, 1617, 1718. And we have a budget this year of $33.5 million. On page seven, you will see a comparison of the six-month expenditures, and we are at 43% this year compared to 41% in the prior year. And these are comparable. On page eight, it'll give you an analysis of the revenues for property taxes, TOT, utility taxes, and sales taxes, and the budget expenditures at the lower end of the slide. I also wanted to bring to your attention, if you did not notice, on your staff report, at the last page, I have included a quarterly report, which will be new, and I will give this to you every quarter, and it'll just give you a briefing of what the quarter looks like. Any questions?
Mayor Pro Tem Corz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the update. Just one question, is we were, I know we're waiting to get sort of the five-year rolling average increase in CalPERS and health retirement benefits.
Correct.
But for the, so for the next year, the numbers you gave, was that, if you know it, if you don't, we can get it another time, was that what we were expecting a year ago?
I believe this was, worked with, with an actuarial, actuarial company, and I will be meeting with them on Monday to go over the future costs for the next five years.
Okay, great. Okay. So when we get that, that would be really helpful for at least the budget subcommittee as we're moving forward. So thank you for doing that.
Yes.
I have a question. One thing I was sort of surprised at was, you know, we know the unfunded pension liability keeps going up because of the discount rate and because, you know, now, you know, the capitalization rate. But what I was really surprised, I know the Gatsby is requiring us to now put on the balance sheet the other pension, other post-employment benefits, which are mostly, I think, employee healthcare for retired employees, no longer with the city. But that, that increase on that one went up from 100, went up 34-point million, 34.5 million from 107 to 141. That's a 30% increase in one year. How did that happen?
That, that has always been there. It just hasn't been transparent on the balance sheet. Gatsby required us to be transparent and place all this on the balance sheet, compared to in the, in the past, it was represented in the notes section.
Okay. Hey, another question I have, I brought this up last year, and, you know, one thing that I worry about is, a couple of years ago, the council asked city manager to do a study of what capital maintenance requirements are needed to be done on capital bill, on, on city-owned buildings. And we have a lot of them. And we, the city did that study, and it was a pretty thick report here. And this report shows, this was from 2017 to 2036, this is not new buildings, or, or this is just maintaining the buildings we have. It came out to $269 million over that 20-year period, and now, two years have passed. And 99 million of that is the airport, which is a different fund, that's an enterprise fund, and also there's federal funds involved there, et cetera. But that still leaves $170 million in maintenance that we know we're going to have to do over the next 17 years. And I'm, you know, we're setting aside money for pension, the pension liabilities, but we're not setting aside any money for this. And I'm a little concerned how we're going to, in future years, future, over the next 17 years, how we're going to address this. Because, Dr. Reddy, I mean, we have a lot of maintenance that needs to be done, and we're not really planning for all of that much, are we?
So Mayor, and Council, this, that's obviously an ongoing question and concern. Maybe the best model that I've seen, and if, the time may have come that council will consider it, is that, that every year, there's a certain amount in capital earmarked for building maintenance. You know, you have a pot of money for your capital, and you specify a certain amount for that for maintenance, and then you prioritize based on that. You still never get really caught up, but what happens is, project, other projects that are important tend to crowd out the maintenance for older buildings. So for example, you know, whether it's the downtown park, or the, the library discussion we're going to have, and all these other issues we have, those crowd out the, what's left for the other buildings. So for example, we're just going through the, the process with the police department and the fire station, you know, the combination of those two is what about, going to be about $15 million, or at least $14 million. And that has crowded out a lot of the dollars we needed in all the other buildings. So... So, one model we could use is that X amount of our capital every year will go into older building. So that's something that maybe the subcommittee may want to consider and recommend to Council.
I'd really like to ask the subcommittee, as they're putting, working with the budget and then the whole, before it comes to the whole council, to please look at this long-term maintenance. I mean, look at the building we're in right now, this building. I mean, it's getting really ragged at the cuff. I mean, the front, you know, there's rush running down the front of the building, and it's just not, it's something that's going to have to be addressed one of these days. And we're kicking this can down the road, and it's been kicked down the road for years. We can't ignore it forever, because eventually, it's going to come up to haunt us. Unfortunately, council members, you know, are only here for a few years, and they really want to do things that really look good this year. And this is not very glamorous, but it's sort of like your own home. If you don't keep up the painting, and you don't keep up the maintenance, eventually, it catches up with you. Councilor Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely agree. We certainly learned the lesson when it came to street repairs. If you defer, 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 staying on top of the maintenance, then you end up having to do more severe repairs than you would have otherwise been able to do. So that's something that we will want to look at as part of this budgetary process. But I don't want to let this session go away without taking another look at those sales tax numbers, because those are remarkable increases, and they are testimony to the work of so many people in this city, from this council, most importantly, previous city councils who made the investment in our downtown, and of entrepreneurs with their investments in this community. So, there is a big shout-out that we are doing an awful lot of things very, very well to be able to have those kinds of numbers. We cannot assume that they are going to go on forever. Is the recession this year? Will it be next year? Will it be the year after? We don't know, but there is a recession coming. And unfortunately, an awful lot of that sales tax increase revenue is discretionary purchases that individuals make. And so I think a budget priority for us, as we look at fiscal year 1920, still has to be ensuring that we're putting sufficient money aside during good years to get us through the difficult years that we can predict will come.
Councilmember Roberts?
I'm sorry. This is a buzzkill. So, Dr. Reddy, I look you square in the eye, sir, and I want to say thank you. And once again, and I, and as we go through this list, and we back, we backed, and one of those screens backed 10 years, and this consistent increase, and I lay a lot of that at your feet, and of course, your staff's feet. This is remarkable. I doubt we have press in the room anymore tonight, but I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a press piece go out on this about the condition the city's in right now, and how well we're doing with tourism. And what it says to me more than anything is that we've taken some risks, we've done some things, they've been very controversial, but we're on the right track right now. And when, when we can sit here and talk about all the ancient maintenance and the long-term problems, and the, you know, the PERS issues that we're now trying to clean up that have been dragging around for years, those are happy problems, funny enough, when we consider how fortunate we are to be in the position we are right now. And I wanted to say thank you. And I think we should stop for a minute and count our blessings, as dorky as that may sound. So thank you, sir. You are, have always been an honor to work with, and your hard work is never lost on us.
Thank you, Councilman. It was, it was a great team effort by a lot of people over a lot of years. And I would just make one observation. What was, what was apparent is that everyone was moving in one direction, you know, in terms of the downtown, the hotel, the convention center, the airport, and they all had a commonalities of moving from one level to another, and it's all started to come together. And so it's, it's obviously the council's policies, you know, all the staff's efforts. And as importantly, what we're founding is that our stakeholders, our stakeholders time and time step to the plate, supporting the tax increases, giving assistance in all these other areas. And then, once we put the policies out there, then they took them and utilized them, and it manifested into what we have today. So it's been, it's been a great case study, actually.
Any other comments on this item? Okay. Then we'll go to the last item on the agenda, which is item E, award of a construction contract to Metro Video Systems, Inc., in the amount of $399,240, $399,240 for the keyless entry system, Phase 1, City Hall Police Department, and City Yard slash Fleet Buildings, CP14-23. Staff report, please.
Mayor, thank you. Your comments regarding maintenance of buildings and facilities is key to this item. This is one that was identified as a staff recommendation for the projects to be funded. And I realize we still owe the council additional information on the range of capital projects and priorities for your consideration. The challenge there is that that list is an unending list, and it depends on who you talk to, what those priorities are. So this one, we recommend you move forward with only because the bid will go stale, and you'll either have to consider awarding it tonight, or otherwise, we'll return and have you reject the bids, because we'll have to rebid or just table the item. We recommend that you move forward, because the security system we have here at City Hall is really no longer supported by the vendor. And so we'll have a challenge to the extent that the software fails, and then we have problems with, you know, securing City Hall. This will also add this type of security system at the City Yard and the Police Department and at the Fire Station, too. The good news is that the bid did come in just under our estimate, which was nice for once. So David and I recognize that the bigger issue of what are the range of capital projects and priorities, other than those we've already represented to the council, but we'd like you to consider awarding this outside of that. As noted in the staff report, we're recommending that the funding from this come from the city's capital fund, not the Measure J fund. There's about $6 million and change in there, and this, this would represent about $400,000 from that, from that account. So with that, we recommend your approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Holstage and seconded by Councilmember Middleton. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Next item is our second public comments, public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest from, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Two minutes will be allowed for each speaker. We have two speakers, Darrell Terrell and Alan Worthy. First speaker, Mr. Terrell.
Hi. My name is Darrell Terrell from Reno Valley. Tonight, I would like to share with you another idea that will not only save your city money, but control costs and deliver better results to your residents. I would like for you, the council, and Dr. Reddy, to consider investing in GovStat based on the city of Baltimore's city stat. A data-driven management system designed to monitor and improve the performance of city departments in real time. The goal would be to use information technology to improve service delivery in every city department. More than just a management system, GovStat would be an accountability tool that ensures that the failure in service deliveries are acknowledged and amended in a timely fashion. Every two weeks, the mayor, a city council member, Dr. Reddy, the director of the GovStat, and key executive team members would meet with selected department heads to review the most recent department data. Department heads would answer questions about the data and says what it says, and if there's any problem, what is being done to fix it immediately. While GovStat will be a useful tool for tracking the state of the city, it is the most valuable performance management tool. Cities that use GovStat reports have produced dramatic improvements in city services and efficiency. According to the Kennedy School of Government, the financial effectiveness of the city of Baltimore's city stat has been estimated as a total of arrogant savings of $100 million for its four years of existence. What I'm saying, this, this program does work, and I think if you do it on a pilot basis with a department, you'll see, you'll have greater savings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Next speaker is Alan Worthy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first thing I have to say, I attended a memorial service for Jacob Montgomery, and it was absolutely inexcusable that not one of the four of you were there, Mr. Reddy, you, no one from the city. Mr. Mayor, you're excused. You were very ill the night before. You could verily speak. It's inexcusable. The hypocrisy here is too much to bear. All-inclusive, there's three teenagers and a 25-year-old gunned down, right down the street, and no one from the city is there. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Well, so we have a new city attorney, because you ran Mr. Cotton off. So good luck, sir. The city is in violation of the Brown Act. I expect you to answer my demand. You're in default of it. It's been over 30 days. Brown Act, and also PC 422, and identity theft 363. What happened to me and my family, sir? No different from the Joe Pond family. Approaching $3 million. Could be four, could be three, 2.75, who knows? Who cares? Not in this town. Thank God Pat Cooper was here tonight, was able to catch up with her, had to go to Manny Perez's office to correct all the fraud and the garbage committed on the court by Sergeant Matt Beard. So they had the DA's office turned upside down. That's what LGBT has done to the DA's office. Okay? It's a disgrace, Mr. Coors, Ms. Holstage, that's it. This is it. Okay? I will hear from you tomorrow. I'm taking you to the bar. Enough of the shenanigans, my having to go to Manny Perez and Pat Cooper over the garbage coming out of this city and straightening it out to DA's office. It is despicable.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
Thank you. And that was my two minutes, and none of them screamed, and so I didn't have to scream. Please make note of that.
Mr. Rahi, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? You put a card in? Okay.
During the former performance I did.
That's all right.
Hi. My name is Les Young, and I'm a member of the LGBT Outreach Committee. And I'm here tonight to talk about the fact that on April 2 at 5:30 PM at the Mizell Center, we will be hosting a town hall meeting with Chief Reyes, speaking to the community. It'll be based on the Stonewall, the 50-year anniversary, and we are inviting you all to attend, and hopefully, you'll be able to make it, and staff as well. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the final public comments for the evening. Next item is city council and city manager requests an upcoming agenda development. Anyone? Councilmember Coors?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Reddy, number six, the tenant protection ordinance. Think we're going to try and move that to March 20th if Director Fag thought he could get that done, based on direction. So if we can have that on there, assuming it's ready, that would be terrific. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Roberts?
Dr. Reddy, are you familiar with GovStat? Is that something we already have?
Yeah. It's a variant, city stat, GovStat, there's, it's a broad range of looking at data consistently, continually, and always adjusting your service delivery to it. So it's a, it's a, it's a whole culture thing.
Okay.
So there's, we have, yes. So the short answer is yes, but to the extent that you can do it in a, in a government of this size.
So it's a, it's a, it's a sort of a base that you can continue adding.
Yeah. I mean, the ideal one, and the best example was in the New York Police Department, for example. I mean, they have whole staffs dedicated to the data collection, and they have, you know, weekly meetings, and so it's a thing. It's a, it's a certainly a wonderful thing to do.
Seems like we might be a bit small for it.
Yeah. Well, and every city has variants of it, depending upon their capacity.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. And I had something else, but I don't remember, because I'm old.
Councilor Middleton?
Okay. Dr. Reddy, one of the items that's on for future is improvements to trailhead parking. And certainly, the issues that we had with regarding Araby Cove created some very specific dynamics there, but I've also had really good conversation with the Desert Trails Coalition recently regarding parking issues and their volunteering to help as we try to address those. So I'd like to see us have conversation here at council as soon as we can regarding improving our trailhead parking and creating some new options for it.
Can I ask you, who is the Desert Trails? It'd be good to get their input. Do you know who that is? Some contact information for them?
I do have that. I don't have it here with me. But what was impressive with the group that asked to meet with me is it included individuals from the equestrian community, from the hiking community, from the bicycling, mountain bicycling communities, all of them coming together, who, where they are using trails and helping to maintain those trails. Thank you.
Mayor Portem, course.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that's a really good idea, and just make sure, it sounds like we should get our Parks and Rec Department Commission, in whatever way makes the most sense, engaged in that process, since it deals with already working on it. There's a subcommittee on that at Parks and Rec. So let's make sure they're engaged in that process as well, but that would be great.
Anyone else? Or Councilmember Roberts?
I just wanted to let the council know that we have not forgotten about new benches and trash cans and things of, of a pretty nature for our downtown. And Dr. Reddy and I, in fact, are trying to schedule some time with Joy Brown Meredith, who of course heads up the Main Street Committee. We had asked her to come up with some ideas with the downtown first, based on things that they might want to see, and we did that a few months ago. So we're going to push that a little bit forward now. We want to kind of get that moving.
We have, we have two tentative dates. We're waiting to hear back from them to confirm that they can start that discussion.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you all know that we're, we're working on it.
Yeah. What happened on the, on the magazine rack things? Did we order those?
Well, we, that's going to be part of it. We pretty much settled on the trash can, because it's, it's really effective, and it's working well, and it's much easier for staff. And I guess we're now actually, honestly, for the first time, separating recycling and trash, where in the past, it never worked. So the trash cans are working. I think we, I haven't heard back yet from staff about the paper boxes, but I think it's effective. I think it solved a problem. So we'll be looking at that along with benches. Benches are the things that are still up in the air, because there are so many factors with, you know, aesthetics is one part of it, but what's really going to hold up well? And pump springs, inasmuch as we enjoy that great level of downtown tourism, and they're really hard on downtown furniture and plants and planters. Our staff works literally around the clock, trying to hold that stuff together.
That reminds me, Dr. Reddy, I know Councilmember Milton and Councilmember Roberts and I all went over, and we all picked out the same replacement LED fixtures for the downtown holiday lights.
You did?
We did.
Yeah. And I was wondering, because those need to be priced out, so the budget And I was wondering, because those need to be priced out so the Budget Committee can put them into the budget because...
I think we already did. Do you have some money in mind?
Yeah, but, okay.
All right. We're, we're...
I know Marcus for many years.
And it's the first...
I didn't think it would ever happen.
No, no. Hey, Stacy had us all over there some time ago. Stacy knows which one we picked out.
Okay. Thank you for that. Good.
I thought you knew.
All right.
Okay, no.
Oh, ye of little faith. You didn't think we'd do this, huh, Marcus?
Marcus, check with Stacy. She knows which one we picked out, and we need to get those priced so we can get them budgeted because the ones we have won't make it another holiday.
I thought we already budgeted for this, Dr. Reddy, a while ago.
We don't exactly...
We got a pot of money for it, don't we? It's already budgeted.
Yeah, we, I bet they end up costing twice as much as we budgeted, so...
Well, even though the Scrooge doesn't believe in it, I think that if anything, it might have gone down because LED actually saves money, so...
But we need to get moving. So at least, at least you, you didn't know we had approved them, so at least now you know that. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay. Seeing none, we will, the City Council will adjourn to the next regular meeting Wednesday, March 20, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM.